The school board on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five at, sorry, seven oh seven P M. In attendance, I want to note that all seven board members are present. We also have a Saffa, one of our student representatives present today. So bienvenidos and welcome, everybody. We will begin with the review of our agenda. Board members, if you want to propose making any changes to the agenda or to pull an item from the consent agenda, this is the time to do so. Are there any changes that you'd like to make to the agenda? Um, that anyone can request that change. Tammy?
I would like to pull the Raleigh Hills F F R from the consent agenda.
Okay, are there any other changes? Okay, hearing none, we will um. We'll approve the agenda with the removal of that Raleigh Hills F F F F A furniture from the consent agenda. Thank you. Um, and then, all right, we'll start off the meeting with recognitions. With the Verna Bailey B. The Change Award recipients. Um, please take their way up to the presenter's table and Susan, would you please introduce them? And your mics are on red right now, but we'll turn them on green when you speak. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, first of all, I I'm, I want to make sure you know who Verna Bailey is. You're being honored with this um wonderful Verna Bailey, um, you know, award or be the change. And um, at least I can say that my kids had the privilege of having her as their principal at Montclair Elementary School um, many years ago. Um, so she was an administrator in Beaverton School District. She was the first African American um to work as an administrator in the Beaverton School District. But not only that, she was the first African American woman to go to the University of Mississippi. She had a lot of courage and always, always put students first. So before I say anything, I just want to congratulate you because I feel like this is a big honor to get this award. So I'm congratulating the three middle school winners of the twenty twenty five Verna Bayla, Bailey, be the change award. This is, award is given to sixth or seventh grade students of color who believe that building empathy for others, increasing racial awareness and promoting social justice are crucial elements in fostering a just and supportive community. The winning students will each create a project that seeks to build awareness of these issues. This year's winners include Amelia White from Conestoga Middle School. Leilia, and I'm gonna mispronounce your last name, so if you can say it for me, I'd appreciate it.
Mpefo.
Mpefo?
Mpefo.
Mpefo. Um, from Highland Park Middle School and Fadil Omer from Stellar Middle School.
Would each of you please briefly describe your project?
Amelia, Amelia, let's start with you.
Um, I would like to thank Ms. Verna Bailey and the Beaverton School District for presenting me with this one. I would like to thank Ms. Verna Bailey and the Beaverton School District for presenting me with this wonderful opportunity. I hope that I can make my school a safer place for everyone there. I aim to help students who have been bullied and prevent further bullying by creating a more inclusive environment. Some of my close friends have been bullied and I don't want them to experience that anymore because that was a really rough time for them.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to start by um thanking you for selecting me for the Verna Bailey Award. I'm very honored to be here. Um, the project I'd like to implement is third spaces. Third spaces are places neither home or school. Um, third spaces are places where students can come together to have converse, you know, and play games, you know. Um, there are many benefits to having third spaces like this. For example, having third spaces shows empathy because you get to share experiences with other students and you get to talk to people, which really just improves the community and better a lifestyle of school.
My project will be about focusing on three themes, which are empathy, social justice and so, so, and racial awareness. These themes will be discussed and portrayed through door decorating and posters. We chose these themes because, well, I chose these things because I thought that these were important themes to focus on, especially for this project, so, yeah.
Thank you so much. Well, let's give everybody a round of applause. Super proud of the work that you're doing to help your community and your schools. And we'd like to invite you and your families to come up for a picture. Um, so if family members or um, people that are here to support you today are, if they could come up and we'll take a quick picture with everybody. Thank you. See, all right, um, our next staff, our, we'll start with our staff. Recogni-, wait, sorry. Our next award is Matt McCollum. Matt, will you please make your way up to the presenter's table and Justice will introduce them. Is Matt here today? Not, not here? Well, we'll have Justice introduce him.
Uh, so I would like to say congratulations to Matt McCollum, science teacher at Mountainside High School for being selected as an Oregon State finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Matt is now eligible to submit an application to the National Review Committee for Consideration for the twenty twenty five PAMIST, that's the acronym, award, uh, I think I said that right, which is nation's highest honor for U S K twelve teachers in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and computer science.
Thank you. Let's just give him a pause. For Matt. Um, and now we'll hand over to the superintendent for superintendent report.
And I'll be brief. We just had our budget hearing this, this afternoon prior to this meeting and we're moving toward a budget approval of a, uh, over seven hundred and eighty million dollar budget. Seven, one point seven billion overall total budget. But we do have concerns and that's based off of, uh, of, off of eleven point six million, billion dollar budget that we have at the, at the state level. Right now, the, the current allocation is a little, a little less than that, but we're hoping that, uh, C L M passes some additional dollars that go toward special programs so we can target those dollars toward our special programs here in Beaverton. There is a worry about a federal fund zone. As we all know, there's been a lot of, uh, uh, change in, uh, the federal level and we do have worry about title resources being diminished over time. I currently do not see a Title Two being sponsored in the out here after September thirtieth. I do worry about Title One, Three, and the rest of the titles actually going into block grants and being, uh, minimized. So that's a worry that we do have. We're really fortunate here in Beaverton to have the reserve that we do have. So in great appreciation for previous boards and previous administration in this board and our phenomenal, uh, budget department led by Mike Schofield to be able to stay steady. Because I think what you see across the state of Oregon is men, not many, I think most districts are having great reductions right now. Most districts, if not every district, has great reductions right now. I think some districts are cutting furlough days. I've heard of the ten furlough days, uh, in, in the metro area. Hundreds of staff being released because of, uh, funding shortages. And we're really fortunate here because of what we have and, and, and what the community's been able to support us with. Uh, so just grateful for the community and our staff that, that have continued to find work. So just wanted to just share that highlight because I know that we talked about it prior to this meeting, but just want to share our budget and we're moving toward the budget approval process. Thank you, Chair.
Um, our next item on the agenda is public comment and we'll start with comments from our employee association leaders from O S E A and B E A. If you can please come on up and then we'll follow that with, um, with comments from our community. So Lindsay, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Superintendent Valderez, Board Chair Perez, members of the board, district leaders and community members. My name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a high school math teacher, currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. I want to start this evening by congratulating B E A guest educators or substitute educator members on the ratification of the recent tentative agreement of the B E A B S D Substitute Educator Collective Bargaining Agreement. Our B E A bargaining team worked diligently to ensure that substitute educators in Beaverton will continue to come to this district and stay in our district. Some highlights from this agreement include the following. Substitutes will see a fourteen percent increase in pay over the life of the contract. Uh, paid time for jury duty has been established for long-term substitutes. Statutory sick leave for substitutes has been codified in the contract. Substitutes will have access to online curriculum for classes they are teaching, which is fantastic. Um, and long-term substitutes who are working, working within specialized programs will have access to paid safety care training. These are great strides for Beaverton substitutes and I encourage the school board to ratify this agreement this evening. Uh, I do just want to take a moment, uh, to say that substitute educators are so, so, so important in our schools and ensure that Beaverton students feel safe and nurtured when their teachers are away. Their jobs are so unique and truly difficult and schools rely on them every day to keep things running. So thank you to each and every guest educator in Beaverton for your service to our students. I also want to take a moment, uh, to uplift our classified colleagues in O S E A as they continue to bargain their contract. We stand in solidarity with them as they continue to fight for fair pay and safe working conditions for our dedicated classified educators who are the backbone of our district. Next, I'd like to address the proposed shifts to the English Language Development or E L D program delivery for next year. Um, all of you on the board should have received a letter, uh, the week before last that has now been signed by almost five hundred Beaverton educators with several questions and concerns about some drastic changes to the E L D program next year. The crux of this shift is to move the specialized education for English language learners out of the hands of dedicated E L D teachers and onto the already overloaded plates of general classroom teachers. I do want to acknowledge that Dr. Heather Cordy did reach out prior to receipt of this letter to arrange a meeting to explain those proposed program changes when it was clear that there were concerns amongst Beaverton educators. B E A leadership and a handful of E L D educators had that meeting last week and were continuing to gather more information. In the meantime, our members still have numerous concerns, not the least of which is that these decisions about the E L D program structure and buildings were made and communicated with minimal input from B E, or sorry, from E L D educators, with very little communication about the implementation of this new structure and with very little time to set up our students and staff for success for next year. This issue hearkens back to our repeated demands for transparency and accountability from the district. Our demands from the letter are that our concerns are heard and addressed before the district moves to full implementation of these program shifts. I would add that for every decision that district admin make, intentional collaboration with educators who are working with our students every day will make those decisions better informed and more beneficial for students. And finally, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, election day is one week from today and that local elections are so, so, so important. Um, so we encourage everyone to vote. Um, you should have received your ballots and you can drop them off in any local ballot drop box or put them in the mail as long as they are postmarked by eight P M. on May twentieth, which is next Tuesday. Uh, you can see our endorsements, uh, for this election on, uh, B E A's website and our social media. So don't forget to vote. Thanks very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Lindsay. Um, now Kirsty from O S E A. Welcome, Kirsty.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Valderez, Chair Perez, and members of the school board. Are you thirsty? I'm Kirsty. I'm Kirsty Sakman. I am a roving parrot three educator for special education and the O S E A president-elect. I want to start with a, a congratulations to our guest educators, also known as our sub educators, for their amazing contract wins. Something from O S E A is that we firmly believe that the more educators in our buildings that are safety care trained, the safer that all of our students, as well as our entire teams are. So that's an amazing win and we're excited for them. With bargaining, um, there's a lot of things. We are chugging along in our process. We continue to thank the B S D team for meeting with us at the table, um, engaging in our meaningful conversations and back and forth discourse over things that we need. We recognize as O S E A that we as a district are, uh, looking forward to three-year contract and possible deficit spending. Um, but a big ask that we have is to really think about the reality of what classified due for every student in this district. How could this district run without our classified staff? I want to take, I took a second just to really soak it in because I know there is some of the easy, easy buy-ins. The, the transportation person that picks them up and drops them off every day. Our amazing lunch staff that feeds them breakfast and lunch. Our crossing guards that help them cross the street safely with their families. Our parent educators that work in the classroom doing terrorist work. But that's what, four of the hundred and forty classified positions? Classified staff serve our district through and through, inside and out, for every single need, top, side, bottom, otherwise, and all the other ideas we hadn't thought of. And they do it at the lowest paid level, but they still show up every day. Something that I want to quote is we in O S E A have a new field rep for Beaverton. I was able to take him out on some site visits with me last week and go and meet some members, be in a school. And as someone who is newer to public education, he truly said to me, I've been in the union a long time. I worked in welders unions. I worked in business builder unions. I've never met so many staff in a union excited to be at work. My welders aren't excited to cut a piece of metal. He goes, I watched the staff walk out of a classroom bleeding to go to the office to clean their hands, but they were so excited because their students still wrote that sentence. I've never worked for a union, supported members of a union that cared so deeply about their work before they cared about themselves. I would like to say, let's take a look at the last few years of classified staff in case none of that really resonated with you on the dedicated work and the glue that we are. Look at the last few years since pandemic, just, just take it back to twenty twenty. Who carried this district? Yes, our teachers did an amazing job meeting with us. Our B S D admin and people here at district office did a lot to coordinate for our students. But who were the people on the front line meeting face to face with that COVID? Meeting face to face with the new challenges, as well as, as the staffing crises continue, a majority of them are in classified positions. Yet, uh, there are many of us who show up day in and day out, no matter the staffing crisis, still showing up for the kids, doing the work of two, three, five, six people every day, hopes that we're gonna find more great people to show up for our students. We love doing it and we're happy too. But at that same point, we want to put that back on the district and the team of the things that we are asking for, especially in the reality that we are looking for more changes in our safety protocols, our safety language that we're hoping to implement into our contract. Something that currently O S E A does not have in our contract is a specific safety article and we would ask the district and our board to really look into the reality of the importance that everybody in our schools feels safe also includes our classified educators. Like Lindsay said, we're gonna remind you that a week from today is our May twentieth election. Voting is an important right as citizens. I think if anyone looks from the top down, no matter what your political affiliations are, we recognize the importance of getting to know and understand why you're voting, who you're voting for, and the impacts of the way a vote can happen, whether you voted with best intent or not. The reality is we can't control the vote, but we can control that we use our voice. We use our brains, we use our minds to read and learn on what we can do to change. And as one thing I can say is that we are all educators in one way or another and we need to show our students how we educate ourselves and the community to show up and vote. I would like to end with a piece that this last month at our school board meeting, I left with a very heavy heart. Specialized programs are near and dear. I think anyone who's heard me speak before knows that I speak loud and passionately for special education of all forms. This last month, we heard some comments and we've been seeing more increase on online public forums around our emotional growth classrooms, our E G Cs, which are a very special breed of specialized student. These students are impacted at a very young age with mental health diagnoses, very extreme trauma, often sometimes intellectual disabilities, and just a higher need mixed with a bunch of other kids where they're learning other, not so great coping mechanisms for the really hard things they're going through and the really hard challenges and the really big feelings in small students, smaller people. Um, and realizing that as an adult myself at thirty-five years old, I still struggle with my big feelings. So putting on big impressions or big ideas on these little people and how they're handling their big feelings is something that really left me with a weight on my heart. I will say that luckily, I am someone who's big on being proactive and I was lucky enough that I'm assigned as a long-term support staff at the Jacob Wismar E G C, which we heard a lot about in our last school board meeting. I love this program. I've been having the time of my life. Am I tired? Absolutely. Do I sweat a lot? Absolutely. Do I run a lot? Yes. But am I having to go to the gym again after work? Most days, probably not. Um, but I love what I do and I want to just make a call out that do these students have a lot of needs? Yes. Do they have a lot of extreme trauma that's really hard to understand and really hard to support? Yes. Are the program staff of educators and parents that are supporting this program really tired? Yes. Are they still showing up every day and doing their very best to keep not only the E G C students, but every student and staff in that building safe? Yes. While also hoping to keep themselves safe as well? Yes. Can all of these things be true at the same time? Yes. Can also be true that the impact of these really hard challenges are heavy on this school? Yes. But at the end of the day, this is a system that we need to continue to work on and grow together and we need to remember that we don't ever put the challenges of students back on students and make them feel less than, as well as don't put it back on the adults that are trying to support them, show up for them and make them feel less than because they aren't quite able to find the right piece to help these puzzles. We, as the adults in the community, whether we are building staff, educators supporting, family members, community members, or just people family members, community members, or just people that care about the well-being of our district, need to show up and remember respect, empathy, kindness, and a problem-solving attitude. Thank you.
Thank you Kirsty. It's now time to hear comments from our community. As a reminder, this is a time when members of the public can comment to the board and the board will actively listen, but will not be able to respond or answer any questions. We appreciate you being here today. The board welcomes public comment virtually or in person from up to 10 people who sign up before the meeting. When there are more than 10 people that request to speak, priority is given to students, district residents, speakers who are, have not already provided public comment during recent meetings in the variety of topics. Comments can also be submitted in writing. We received 13 requests to provide public comment tonight with two speakers joining, joining virtually. The 10 speakers will be Cindy, Cindy Wang, Kevin Z, Cody Huser, Melissa Laird, Sylvia Smart, Travis Field, Kristen Croft, and Caprice Massey in person, April LaCombe and Ramune Nagasetti speaking virtually. Only the people I named are allowed to speak. Each speaker will have up to two minutes to share their thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to another person. We have a timer on the screen. When your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will be turned off if you go over. The school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals. This means that we will end your testimony if you name a staff member, board member, or committee member by name in your testimony. Personnel matters and complaints should be resolved by communicating directly with the employee, their supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on our website. We ask everyone in attendance to model respectful behavior and remember that we have students as well as staff and community here in person and watching online. Our first speaker is Cindy Wang. Cindy, please come up to the front table and please take a seat in front of one of the microphones. Kevin Z, you'll be the next speaker after Cindy, so please come forward to the front row seats and be ready to go next. And Cindy, you just press the button there to make it start, go green when you're ready to speak and you can start when you're ready.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Cindy Wong. I have a first grade student at Jacob Wismer. I want to share with you my perspective as a mother and a woman. I'm not here as an indictment upon the EGC, but here to bring attention and to denounce what is happening at Jacob Wismer. My daughter has been the victim of repeated unwanted physical contact, harassment, and sometimes assault by the same individual, and she is not the only victim. I ask you all, what is this teaching our children and the next generation of young men and women? For young women, that it's okay to be repeatedly touched and harassed. For young men, not just the offender, but the witnesses, that it's okay to place your hands upon girls. All while the adults in the, adults in the room refuse to step in until it's too late and while the authorities in charge allow it to be repeated with impunity. As many of the women here can relate, we have all been placed in situations where we felt vulnerable or unsafe. We mitigate that by avoiding certain situations or to be diligent or on guard. How do you think my daughter feels every day? Constantly wondering if she's going to be attacked when all she wants to do is go to school. I've been trying to raise my daughter to be a strong young woman, to stand up for herself. Because in this world we live in, 81% of women have reported experiencing some form of sexual harassment or assault in their lifetime, myself included. Obviously, I'm not saying that's what's happening here, but for me, this is where it starts. This is where I teach my young daughter how not to be a victim, but what she has experienced at Jacob Wismer has been to the contrary. I'm begging you to fix this. Teach my daughter how not to walk through life scared. Teach my daughter to trust authority. Teach my daughter actions have consequences and teach my daughter violence against women is not okay. Thank you all.
Thank you Cindy. Our next speaker is Kevin Z, followed by Cody Huser.
Hi, my name is Kevin Z. My wife and I have three kids and our oldest will be attending Jacob Wismer Mandarin Dual Language Program next year. We have been part of the Oregon Hope Chinese preschool program for the last three years and have two kids enrolled this past year. I want to briefly speak on the impact that the incidents around the EGC program and safety concerns have on the future enrollment in the Mandarin Dual Language Program at Jacob Wismer. Many families at the Oregon Hope are in close communication with each other and are constantly discussing, you know, future plans after preschool on where to send their kids. When the Jacob Wismer Dual Language Program came up, everyone was super excited to apply and enroll. Fast forward to today, many parents are concerned, scared, and also withdrawing their kids from enrollment. So, I mean, some of the schools I've heard too, that families are enrolling their kids have wait lists, so they would rather send them, their kids to a school that has a wait list rather than the Dual Language Program. I worry that the lack of enrollment, that the Dual Language Program may not reach its full potential if these, if these issues are not addressed. I know these concerns are affecting current students enrolled at Jacob Wismer, but also affecting future students as well. Thank you.
Thank you Kevin. Cody, you are up next, followed by Melissa Laird.
Good evening, good, good evening, Dr. Balderas and Chair Perez and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Cody Huser and I work as a parent educator one at Beaver Acres Elementary. I want to start off by saying that I love what I do and I love working with the students that I work with. However, it is really challenging to keep this work going without being paid a living wage. At the recent bargaining session, BSD proposed a 4.75% cost of living adjustment for the next school year. With the current wages of some of our classified staff, that would account for less than a dollar an hour increase for our staff. According to the Bureau of Labor, inflation has already increased by 3% this past year and is increasing faster in the past few months. While this matches BEA's contract, classified wages on average are proportionally less than certified teacher wages. With an already low wage I am paid monthly, I find it harder and harder to continue working in this field when I struggle to be paid enough to pay my own rent. I urge the school district to bargain in good faith so I can continue doing the great work for all the classified staff that they do in this district. I also want to give a full heart thank you to all of the staff at Jacob Wismer who do their daily diligence to keep their students safe. Thank you.
Thank you Cody. Melissa, you're up next, followed by Sylvia Smart.
Dear board members, approximately two-thirds of BSD students and families reside in the unincorporated areas of Washington County, where public safety services are provided by the county's enhanced sheriff patrol district. My name is Melissa Laird, Chair of the ESPD Advisory Committee, where at least half of our members have families who attend, attended or currently attend a Beaverton District School. On behalf of the ESPD Advisory Committee, thank you for the opportunity to express our strong support for the Youth Services Officers Program, which is centered around ensuring safety, supporting crisis response, and serving as accessible resources for students and staff. According to the 2022 Sea Change Review, 71% of parents and 66% of staff reported positive perceptions of SROs. The 2025 review continues to show strong support across students, parents, and staff as BSD and its law enforcement partners have taken thoughtful steps to clarify and strengthen the role of the YSO. The longstanding partnership between BSD, the Sheriff's Office, and the Beaverton Police Department spans more than 25 years. A key part of that success is the strong, positive, trust-based relationships YSOs develop with student communities. Maintaining YSOs on campuses allows the district to receive help from law enforcement officers who are already familiar with the school environments, policies, and student support practices. Their existing relationships enable them to respond more effectively and discreetly when safety concerns arise, promoting a sense of trust and ensuring responses are aligned with district values and priorities. The district's new park-it-or-packet cellphone policy has led to some concerns from parents and students about how communication would work in an emergency. Having trained onsite officers who already know the schools and the building layouts can respond quickly, help provide an extra layer of reassurance, and support the district's overall emergency preparedness. With clear guidelines, ongoing training, and transparency, YSOs continue to provide a valuable role in cultivating safe, inclusive, and supportive school climates. By keeping their focus on safety, BSD can support security while reinforcing student dignity and community trust. Thank you.
Thank you Melissa. Sylvia, you're next speaker, followed by Travis Field.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Smart and my two children are 25 and 27 and spent all their years in the Beaverton School District. I've spent my life teaching children, women, and people who are marginalized how to speak up, how to speak their truth, how to protect themselves, and how to be empowered. So imagine how concerned I was to find out that 11-year-olds at Meadow Park Middle School are being exposed to pornography in the classroom. The pornography is coming into the classroom on cellphones of other students. The code of the school says that there will be no phones in the classroom. The code is not working. The Beaverton School District policies and procedures say that exposure of this type of sexual nature, pornography specifically images, needs to be treated with the utmost priority. It's a level four concern out of four, one to four. My concern, my worry for all the children at that school, all the children at all the schools, because we know as parents that when something's happening in one middle school, it's happening in all the middle schools. So my concern is that this seems to be being dismissed. People seem to be putting their heads in the sand and pornography is a very serious thing to be exposing 11-year-olds to. So I appreciate how challenging it is to work in the school district, the work that you do, the, the staff, but I implore people to pay attention.
Thank you Sylvia. Travis, you're the next speaker, followed by Kristen Croft.
Thank you, board members. Ms. Sylvia Smart is a friend of mine and my daughter is the one that was exposed to pornography during instructional hours at Meadow Park Middle School. We brought this up to the school over a month ago. During that time, I had met with PTO and other staff. There were promises made and conversations about getting the help that my daughter needs from a psychological safety standpoint, established, methods put in place, and speaking of phone safety and bringing this to the attention for what it is. However, during that time, we continue to call it a inappropriate activity. We are not alerting parents and staff that this has happened in one of the classrooms. I have spoken with many staff that do extracurricular activities outside of the core hours, who were unaware that this had happened within the school itself. These are people who have kids who are in the theater program, who may be backstage with their phones and have access to this information. They are not being observed clearly on a regular basis. I implore you all to reevaluate your phone policies on how these things are done. Additionally, look at how do we get psychological safety in our schools and professionals available who are psychologically trained to help with these children? My daughter is on a wait list to try to find a psychologist who can specialize in this. Otherwise, right now, we have a counselor at the school, but no other professional help has been offered to my family or to my daughter or any other student that I am aware of in Meadow Park who has been exposed to such a thing that rewires the brain of a child that we know causes permanent problems without treatment.
Thank you Travis. Kristen, you're the next speaker, followed by Caprice Massey.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Croft. I started working for the Beaverton School District in 2008 as a special ed parent educator. I now teach one of the two most intensive specialized programs in our district. I love the work I do and couldn't do it without the support of my incredible team. We do great work, but we are exhausted and stretched far too thin. Our students are amazing and probably the most misunderstood population. I hear the comments that come from the EGC programs and perception about them and it breaks my heart, makes me quite emotional actually. Again, very misunderstood students. I want to be very clear in stating that this isn't an issue with building level admin. It's not an issue with special ed. It's a district-wide problem. And it seems to go ignore, ignored unless a parent community gets involved, as we saw last month with Jacob Wismer. The reality I'm faced with is this. I have had fewer than 10 lunch breaks this year. The only days I have had all my planned time were days without students. I know I'm not the only one in this position. I often hear from other specialized program teachers that they stopped complaining a long time ago because it got them nowhere and there simply wasn't time to complain anymore. We've been told to just take your lunch with no real plans in place. I'm currently off work due to a work injury and it's not the first time this has happened. While we have workers' comp benefits, we are still losing wages because we have been to our sick time for this. We love the jobs we do. We need more support and I really would urge you to evaluate what is truly needed in special ed programs so that we can support our students to the best of our ability.
Thank you Kristen. Caprice, you're up next speaker, followed by April LaCombe, that's virtually.
Thank you. I am Caprice Massey and I am the current Washington County Sheriff. I do not fit in this chair, so forgive me while I sit sidesaddle. I came to talk to you today about something I'm most passionate about, which is our youth services officers and their presence in our public school systems. First, I'll speak as the Washington County Sheriff and tell you that the intentionality that we appoint our deputies to our schools is essential with a lens on helping to build relationships early and trust often, especially with our historical marginalized communities that I have been working so hard in my first year as sheriff to, to build relationships and get to know people. But what I really want to talk about is why it really matters to me and that's my lived experience as a mom. I have 12, 14, and 30-year-old daughters and when my 14-year-old was the recipient and continues to be the recipient of racial slurs and threats of violence against her because she's African-American and white, I, she goes to our school resource officer or youth services officer for support because they are there building that relationship early. They know her, they care for her, and they are providing those critical supports and accountability that isn't always present in our school system. And what she doesn't get is a statement of, "He just had a bad day," after she's been threatened with being jumped and has had the N-word yelled in her face over and over. That's what she's dealing with on her every day and that youth resource officer, that services officer, is her onsite support. Thank you.
Thank you Caprice. April, you're our next speaker, followed by Ramune Nagasetti, also virtually. Oh, okay, April didn't log on and we don't have anybody else online?
Uh, just Ramune.
Okay, so Ramune? We can't see them yet, so I don't know.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we just can't see you.
I tried to start my video, but I think somebody turned it off, so I can't turn it on. It says my video is disabled because the host has disabled it.
Um, is there?
Okay, it looks like, okay, great, thanks, I'll start. My name is Ramuni Nagasetti. On April 29th, my brother, Vidas Nagasetti, went before the board to petition for his renewal and reassignment to a different school in the district. The plan of assistance evaluation data he showed indicated that he was on a positive trajectory, which which directly contradicted the superintendent's claim. He also showed that he met the district's standard for proficiency, but that the principal was actually holding him to a higher standard. Lastly, he was coerced and intimidated to resign in exchange for a letter of recommendation. My comment is that it appeared that the school board was unaware that the plan of assistance success criteria could be set higher than the district's standard. Also, they did not appear to be disturbed that the principal and HR had unethically tried to coerce my brother's resignation in exchange for a letter of recommendation. The board has seven members, so that they do not end up in a tie. But one board member recused themselves, so there were only six. Since they deliberated for nearly an hour before returning with their verdict, I suspect it ended in a tie. In the rest of the world, a tie means that nobody wins or loses, but in this case, tie means that the superintendent won and the employee lost. Lastly, the union, Vides, paid nearly four thousand dollars in union dues over the last three years. Yet the union only offered a fifteen-minute legal consultation to defend his employment, record, and career. A fifteen-minute legal consultation is worth about one hundred dollars, and that is miniscule in compared to the four thousand dollars in union dues over three years. In summary, this shows that HR, the school board, and the union are advocates for the administrators, not for the educators. I hope I'm not the only one here who sees this as a problem.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Now we'll move on to public comments on instruction time expectations, which we have. Do we have anybody for comments on that? Okay. Let's see what's the next part. Sorry, so items for information? So I was just seeing if there... Nobody on instruction time.
Okay, Steve, thanks.
Thanks. So our first item for information tonight is generative AI responsible use by Steve Langford and Stafford Boyd. Welcome, you can get started when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Perez, members of the school board. Superintendent Balderas, for the record, my name is Steve Langford, I'm the chief information officer.
My name's Stafford Boyd, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment District Administrator.
We're going to spend a few minutes sharing the work of the Generative AI Advisory Committee, which met beginning in the winter and recently finished their work. So we're going to start with why this work is important. There's really three main reasons for that. One, tools are all over the place, and applications are all over the place. Since November of two thousand twenty-two, when generative AI applications were released and made available to the public, there have been many tools, many free tools, and indeed, we're seeing a movement from generative AI tools being a place you go visit to being features inside of applications that we already use. So there are many applications that are used inside the district and elsewhere, and probably in your personal lives as well, now have generative AI tools as a feature. So it's important that we talk about it and we figure out how to use them responsibly. Second reason is that despite a narrative that generative AI can just write our papers for us or do our work for us, which it can do that somewhat poorly, but there's also some great potential here. And so when we think about stories we've heard of students who are using it like they use YouTube or the internet as a resource to help them in understanding, there's great potential for, if properly used, generative AI applications to be another support resource for students and to help our staff work more efficiently. And then the final reason why it's so important for us to be talking about this is because they're available and because they have the features they do, there's confusion sometimes about how they should be used responsibly. And so we have student experience that could vary based on grade level, assignment, subject matter, or comfort with GenAI tools. And we need to seek and introduce some clarity by defining what responsible use looks like.
So our first step on this journey in crafting AI responsive, generative AI responsible use guidance was to bring together a group of across constituency groups. And so we put out an application in December, and we received eighty-nine applications. And we used a blind selection process. Members of Steve's team, my team, as well as the Office of Equity and Inclusion had a blind scoring process and identified twenty folks to join us as committee members. As you can see, three parents, and they crossed all grade bands. Seven licensed staff, representative of elementary, middle, high, options dual-language schools, as well as a district teacher on special assignment and an instructional technology teacher leader from one of our schools. Also included two administrators, one school-based administrator, one district administrator, one IT business community member, two classified staff, one working in schools and one working in district operations, and finally, four students, representative of our comprehensive high schools and our option schools.
And the group was charged with delivering just two deliverables. The first being to develop responsible use guidelines, and we're going to be exploring that a little further as we go on. And then the second is to provide some considerations for policy and procedure impacts. And we thought that that was important. That group is not a policymaking body, of course, but as they were exploring what this looked like in other school systems, decisions we make and defining responsible use could have impact into our policies, and we're going to be sharing more about that later.
So here's the trajectory of the committee. As you can see, we met monthly, January through April, and which has arrived us to May, which is where we are now. And through that process, we did very intentional engagement through two district committees. The first being the Equity Advisory Committee. Our Office of Equity and Inclusion staff engaged that committee in some intentional feedback conversations that we incorporated, that the committee incorporated. And then in March, we also did something similar with our Student Advisory Committee to the superintendent to receive their, just stories about their experiences and their hopes around AI. And in April, we finished with a template for responsible use guidelines on what content should be in there and some, as well as some recommendations for specific content. So we have our district support teachers now, teams of our district support teachers, teaching and learning teachers on special assignment, as well as our middle and high school instructional technology teachers working on the specific content now. And this month, we've already engaged around impacts and what we might consider in supporting staff using these responsible use guidelines with our Professional Development Advisory Committee, which is a committee that meets monthly with teaching, staff from Teaching and Learning Team, as well as BEA leadership and lead teachers. And in a week and a half, we will also engage all our district school administrators around and get feedback and input from them on these responsible use guidelines. So these are kind of the big buckets of content that the committee guided us to include in our responsible use guidelines. As you can see, we actually spend a lot of time grounding ourselves in principles, and which is kind of the first part of the content to make sure that it's very clear about the why for responsible use. And then the guidance will flow off of those principles, which Steve will share with you in a minute. And then the next few bullets are really about teacher and student instructional use of generative AI. And again, you can see the categories. And then finally, we'll have a section specific of how families, guidance for families, around supporting student use of generative AI, and then some content specific to staff responsible use of generative AI.
And as Stafford mentioned, the principles around how we're going to define responsible use are serve as the anchors for the rest of the content. And so we wanted to take a few minutes and just explore those briefly with you. The first one is that responsible use should be purposeful. And you can see up there that the group felt like we've got to be very explicit about these tools are not a substitute for our human thinking, our human learning, but they need to be used in a way that supports and not replaces our learning and our staff work. And the best analogy I heard is that it's like a bicycle. As you're riding a bicycle, you can move faster and it can accelerate your work, but bad things happen if the humans take their hands off the handlebars. And so that's one of the core tenants and core principles that was developed so that we can, as we share what responsible use looks like, it is done in a purposeful manner. And then the next point relating to that is that we must educate our students and our staff that part of that purposeful use involves checking and critically evaluating the content, looking for bias specifically and inaccuracies called hallucinations. The next principle that we discussed with the group and they developed was ethical use. So use must be ethical. And so it must align with our existing documents that describe how we will behave as students and as staff. And so for students, we have the Student Code of Conduct. For staff, we have the Code of Professional Conduct. And so as we are developing and sharing out this responsible use of GenAI tools, we're going to be making sure that that aligns, and it's also an opportunity to show staff and students how it fits into that larger context. And then for ethical use, we want to also work around that they must, these tools must not be used in a ways that cause harm, malicious activities, or discrimination. Use must be consistent, and this was, I'd say, with respect to the group, this is an area that we spend a lot of time working with. As I mentioned, there's some confusion. The good news here is that we are not alone. School districts across this country are working through this process right now and trying to determine how to introduce clear expectations for students by level and by grade, by subject, so that students know if, and when, and how they can use these tools to support their learning, and staff have that same understanding as well. The other part of that is that if we are going to be leaning into these tools for an assignment, all students have to have access. This isn't a tool that just some students can access, but if it's a support to learning, we must make sure that it's available for all. And then finally, the last principle is around safety. And this is another very important topic as we are thinking about all of the data that goes into these tools and reports that sometimes we don't know how they're learning right now. So how's that make you feel? So we want to make sure that we're educating students and staff around what to put in, but also what not to put in. So confidential information, personal information needs to be left outside of these tools. And again, they must use in a way that is safe and does not harm others.
So where are we going into the summer is, again, our teams are working on content, and Steve and I will get that finalized into June. And then we will partner with our Communications and Community Involvement Department to get that formatted in a publishable and interactive ways. And then over the summer, we'll work on crafting and refining our Professional Development Plan for staff in implementing these responsible use guidelines starting next school year. And again, we'll engage our school leaders, particularly in August as we get ready for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then from that, policy revisions, we'll start bringing new policy revisions.
And speaking of that, the last thing we want to leave you with is just some of the things that we asked the group to develop as part of their work. And again, they're not a policymaking body, of course, but as they were looking at developing the responsible use guidelines, their suggestions are that as we consider policy adjustments, we look at making sure that equitable access is addressed. Connections to academic integrity and ethical use are inside that policy and are clear. We're transparent and we communicate well expectations. And then again, students' data safety, student data privacy is addressed. And it was interesting because the policy considerations, they line up really well with the core principles. And so with that, we've actually come to the end of what we have for you, and we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Sunita and then Susan. And then Safa.
I want to thank you for the work because from your why, I really thought that the number three is very important. We need to give clear guidelines. And the, in the next few, I would be more interested, you know, like, what are your AI considerations across K through twelve? Because when we talk about safety, it looks really good that, yes, you know, we need to be safe. But at elementary level, does the kid understands what that means, really? So it would be nice to hear more about where is this going to end up? Like, is it just for our high school students? Because they will need that as they were planning for college, or, you know, can they use that for essays and stuff like that? So I would be more interested in listening more about that. Thank you so much for the work.
Susan and then Safa.
Now, this has been worked on all year, and thank you so much for forming this committee. Excuse me, now I'm going to get all choked up. So I have a couple of questions. One, and I don't know if this is a policy, maybe it is a policy, but how do teachers cite that they're using AI? And how would students cite that they're using AI? Because I'm just talking to you, writing a paper, just, you know, just like you're doing a bibliography and you're citing resources. Is that being thought about in terms of the use of AI? And then I have another question, like, in terms of, this is an environmental question, because we're looking at AI, and there's, you know, questions about the amount of energy that's used for AI, and we're looking at, you know. And so I'm wondering, as you're building your policy, if we're looking at the environmental impact of AI?
I think, Susan, I can speak to your first question. So we already have in our student code of conduct information around academic integrity and responses, potentially to plagiarism. And so this is an opportunity to update that. So part of the guidance will include how appropriate citing of AI in student learning and assessment should look, and also when citing should happen based upon how students, what type of AI use they're using on their assignments. And that's part of creating that clarity and transparency so that teachers and students are really clear before learning starts what the expectation is for a lesson or a project or an assignment.
And then, and teachers would also be citing that they've used AI to, you know, maybe it's a math problem or something like that. They've used other sources like AI to come up with questions?
Yes, and that Professional Development Plan is really working with districts across the state and the nation is that getting teachers to learn by doing and then having them cite and giving them that guidance and those pathways to do that is the best professional development that seems to be happening. So that would be part of our plan. And really describing how teachers can use it to be effective, just to be more effective and efficient in their work, to potentially, how to engage students, and then also how to actually have students and teach students how to use it for their own work.
Safa?
I have a question following up about, you mentioned equal access. And then we were also talking about how there can be different comfort levels for every student going into AI, right? Like, some students may not even know how to use AI, some students do. So how are we ensuring equal access knowing that students are on different comfort levels? Are they going to receive training, maybe like classes? I'm not sure.
Yes, part of the, just instructionally and learning, one of the key questions is, is what are students' prior knowledge and experience in using AI? And that's a consideration for teachers. And so we need to make sure that teachers are comfortable understanding and using AI before putting it in front of students as a learning expectation. But then actually, along the way, teaching students, and that really goes back to what's the purpose of the use of AI for the learning? And if there is no purpose related to the learning outcomes that the teacher wants, then AI shouldn't be used. So it really gets back to that purposeful, but that's one of the key considerations. Um so it's really gets back to that purposeful, but that's one of the key considerations that will be in the guidance.
Uh Tammy and then Ugana.
Uh thank you, guys. Um appreciate all the work. Um and I know when we were first, you know, you guys came to us maybe six months, eight months ago and
Yeah, November, I think, yeah.
Okay. Um and I, you know, I expressed some skepticism then, and I I still hold that skepticism. Um a lot of what you presented is about how we're going to implement this and equity is very centered and and I do appreciate that. I still am not entirely sure I understand the why. Um I um I think students can write their own papers. Um I don't think there's any reason to encourage um to your motif, the the bicycle, you know, they can they can figure this out on their own. In addition, um with these large language models um that once they've scraped the internet, now they're scraping the output of AI. And we're and we're almost in, you know, the AI slop era, and it almost feels like okay, you know, you know, maybe even, you know, setting aside AI, you know, is the internet a reasonable source for information? You know, that's maybe even a different question. But I would love to understand from the groups you met with, from the teachers that are on board with this and the students that are on board with this, um why? And and I guess, you know, um, you know, did you was did the committee consider not moving forward with um integrating AI into the classroom?
Sure, and and those are all valid. Uh I think people's feelings, uh we we had an exercise we did with the committee around comfort level with AI. And it was surprising to see where people feel uh felt. It was not a room full of people who went who were thinking one way and who thought that this is going to be absolutely transformative. Um people have those concerns, and I I think that's one reason why we need to make sure we're very clear in how AI tools could be used to help. And so they they are very available, and we can try and block it. Um and we certainly can on our devices and on our networks, but that doesn't block a student's experience outside. And so we we need to, if we're going to ensure that we're not taking our critical thinking and putting it on a shelf and just letting the machines do the work, we need to teach, we need to have a discussion about what does this look like in a way that can be effective and helpful? So that it doesn't become harmful.
Is there um are are there school districts that have chosen differently and and they're saying no AI? Um and is there way, you know, you you're saying that it you can block it, but it's integrated into a lot of the um and, you know, I've heard of like a teacher can like have an additional prompt in like white, you know, ink, if you will, that can get fed into the the AI question. Um and that that would be a flag. So that a teacher would know if a student used that because they'd hidden this prompt inside the the question that a that a student that wasn't using AI wouldn't even see because it's sort of hidden in there. So I I feel like there's ways that you could say, yes, I know it's out there, I know it's embedded, and we could um we could um prohibit its use by these little tricks. Is there was there any um you know, thought given to like, okay, let's think about what it would look like if we decided not to um allow or even encourage the use of AI?
Tricks can be defeated. Um so is there a way to stop it? I'm gonna tell you, the answer is no, right? So it's not a, it's not a a place you go to anymore. It's a feature inside of the tools we're all using. We don't have the ability to break those tools. So we either shut down the tools or we have to teach people how to use this responsibly, knowing that they're going to be using this in their personal lives as well. And it ju- doesn't just apply to students. As adults, we need to be learning how to use these tools responsibly for the very same reasons.
And Tammy, I think I can, one more piece is, uh we did have lots of conversations first about you know, people's emotional feelings about currently where they were. But we're in this unique space where it's like half challenge and half opportunity. And the real world demands this. And when we talk to our students, they say, help us understand this because it's not going away. Um and so really, I was I was profoundly impacted by the students and the student voice in this process saying, um, yeah, we, please adults, don't put your heads in the sand anymore and help us understand how to be critically thinking, thinking users with AI. Um and then you match that, say, with you know, the World Economic Forum comes out every five years with the jobs forecast for for the next five years. And like the top, some most of the top twenty jobs are based in AI. Um and but the skills that they list as most important are critical thinking, empathy, they're very human-based skills. And so it's, so as we move forward, it's it's really making sure we're being very mindful of that balance of challenge-opportunity. I think our principles help us do that and and stay grounded. And then uh this guidance, I think, is going to be different than most guidance from my past professional experience is we're gonna have to iterate it if i- if not annually or or quicker than that. And so we're gonna have to make sure that this, we build upon this, Susan, I think eventually we will get to the question around environmental impacts, because that's a much larger question about a lot of things we do as consumers. And so um yeah, we want to, we want to enter into it and then make sure we have processes as we move forward to support our staff, um supporting our students, and then getting the feedback of how it's going across our constituent groups and then change and update that on an ongoing basis as because in five years, AI is gonna look very different than it does now.
Ugana?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Steve and Stafford for your presentation. Um, we all know that the world that we live in is changing at a very rapid uh stage and um and I'm glad that we are trying to keep up with the changing times. So the question I have is um do we have guidelines around how um we can decide or determine to what extent uh students are using AI in completing assignments? For example, um do we have I'm trying to coin this question in a more to what extent are they allowed to use AI? For example, if you're working on an essay or an assignment, do you use AI hundred percent? Do you use it at forty five percent, thirty five? How much do you? Because I, we still want them to um utilize their critical thinking, be able to complete their work um independently without the use of AI. And at the same time, we want to teach our students, you know, the future. And the future is here. So to what extent are they allowed to use AI in completing assignment? Are we gonna put guardrails around that and decide, okay, if you used AI this much, you're graded lower? Or like, I want to know how do we, how do we moderate that?
Sure, yeah. So it's gonna, I I think the right now, we have some variance in the system, to be honest with you. We have teachers who are doing their very best work, trying to understand how this can get integrated into student learning. And we might have others who say, I'm not really comfortable with this yet. I need a little bit of support for that. And that's okay. And we, that's our our work to to bring this um this, these guidelines so that we have some clarity. Um, we do have some um things that we're going to be doing around safety. Um the how students use AI is gonna look very different, depending on grade level, depending on subject, depending on an assignment even. So, you know, the very, at the very worst end would be just use AI and write the paper and don't don't think about it. That's not what we, we have to work, walk back from that. And we have to think about how we can, uh AI could be a support in an assignment much like YouTube videos. So if I'm struggling with a math concept, I can go to a YouTube video and I can watch and I can learn. If I can go interact with an AI tool that would do the same thing, that's gonna be another way I can get support. So it's gonna look different by subject matter and content area. And I think we've got a a team that is working on those what do we call them, considerations by grade level?
Uh yes, we have a a couple of sections in our uh responsible use guidance um titled, and they're they're back a few slides, titled uh levels of use. And so different types of use of AI, so really being clear um uh what those are in relation to an assignment. And then scenarios um and engaging folks in thinking through scenarios on those, through those levels of AI use um uh based upon many, many considerations, what the type of lesson is, what the content area is, what the age level of the student is, um what the skills are of the student. So there's lots of considerations uh that that uh we'll talk about in that part of the guidance. And then generally, uh following the law, um thirteen and eighteen are really important ages in terms of access, not just to AI, but to digital tools. And so if you think about that, that's kind of, you know, middle school to graduation and then prior to thirteen. So we're gonna shape the learning. Um, most kids under thirteen won't have access to any tools because it's it's against the law. And so, but we have to teach them the context of AI as they reach that age thirteen, and then any tools that we approve and support our teachers using with for their work and with students. Um, again, hopefully that that part of the guidance will really equip teachers to be critical thinkers about how they're designing their learning and integrating AI in a very purposeful way that is safe.
Thank you. I appreciate your response. I, this is just a comment. And I see uh a potential concern, just it's in a tiny bit potential concern, because we know that some students are more technologically inclined and more forward than others. And if those who are very much familiar and comfortable around technology are utilizing AI massively and doing much better than the rest of the students who are not um as uh thoroughly versed in AI as other students. So that's a potential uh issue that I see there, that equitable access. That that that's gonna be a potential issue for that I see. So I'm just pointing it out. So I don't know how we're gonna do it, but that's a potential concern.
Um Justice?
Thank you. Uh Juan, thank you uh for the continued progression on this work. Uh I wanted to share that I was recently made aware of um the work of a county and I'll send it to Gustavo administration um and you, because I didn't want it of a a district in Georgia, in Gwinnett County, that has a really advanced um policy, right? And it was really impressive. I don't know exactly how they did it. So I didn't want to, again, I don't want to encourage an alteration of the work that's already being done that I'm not a part of, but I'm listening to. Um, but the thing that I thought was really important in the work was the framing around how AI interacts with education, but was also a discussion about what are our values about education? Um, because the fundamental thing that I um experienced with this is something that is not um I'm not unfamiliar with, meaning at every level of education that I can remember, I remember having the tension between those who were maybe just were excited about the learning and those who maybe had more of a transactional relationship to learning, right? We have a a consistent uh structural message problem in our society that goes beyond our district that you go to the school to get a thing, and then we give you another thing on the other end. Because some folks are structured in an object-oriented versus relational or some other form, right? So with that, what I see, and even some recent our schools have spoke to, that um students are feeling a pressure to use the tool to do a thing, to get the other thing, and then they're gonna like on the end, somewhere down the road, there's gonna be some kind of goal, right? They're gonna be handed a job. They're gonna be handed an opportunity due to due to the proposed completion of tasks using these tools. Um, which one I'll tell you all through. You will be found out eventually if someone who has managed people for over fifteen, over ten years, we will find out you're not capable eventually. So don't cut corners. However, that's easy for me to say at this point in the arc, right? So I think um I'm looking forward as this process develops of also making sure we're expressing our values as a community about education and why it's important. Because I think that's what sometimes is getting lost in the processes and and um what can be seen. Uh and I'm excited, again, that we have our own process. We have community involved. I'm looking forward to more. I think this is something that um as a district, um we're gonna have to do a one, and we're gonna have to do it again. And we're gonna have to update it again, because the tools are moving and also the expectations are moving um faster. You know, quite frankly, than a deliberative body like ours. Um and even the deliberative body that is educational apparatus, administrators, teachers, educators, everybody involved to get us where we need to go. Um so thank you for this work so far. I don't have a particular question. I guess I want to like, and keep us informed so that we can keep the community informed and where we can engage to do more about this. So thank you.
Thank you, Justice. Uh it did remind me that uh OSBA has drafted policy IKJ. We will be taking that through our process. It will be coming before you at some future point.
Um Safa and then Melissa.
Uh I just had a quick question about, you know, there's so many AI applications out there like ChatGPT, Gemini, Grammarly, so many that students could potentially use. Um so after this policy is actually adopted, um is there only a certain application students will be allowed to use? And all the others will be blocked? Is there a preference? Is this preference taken from students, teachers? How does that work?
That is a great question and uh complex as well, because uh the way we've outlined this is it's so easy to get excited about the applications and they come out all the time. There's always new features and they're competing against each other. We've intentionally moved the application discussion kind of farther down the road. We wanted to make sure we all understand how we're gonna use these tools. We want to have sound policies around their use and something that's com- completely understood. And at that point, those two items, they're gonna inform what applications are gonna fit with our responsible use and the policies. And so it's probably not gonna be just use any tool you want. It'll look very different, I think, um as this is unfolding, but depending on grade level, there could be some apps that elementary students use that fit under that thirteen legally. And it might be a feature inside to maybe ask them some questions and help prompt their thinking. And then for secondary students, as we start thinking about what that could look like, likely there'll be some applications that we're gonna gravitate to. And that's gonna help people understand um how to use them versus just saying, use anything you want.
Melissa?
Thank you both for sharing the information. I think the last time you presented, you also got a lot of questions. And I think it's a reflection of we as a community, as a society, don't know, you hinted at this too, that school districts across the nation are grappling with this. So thank you for engaging a really great group of committee members. Please express our gratitude to them, because they're taking time away from their families and their commitments to inform what this could look like for our schools. And I appreciated a couple of things that you said, um ability to evolve the policy. And Justice, you hinted at this too. Uh I was on an AI panel a year ago, and they said, well, if you're uncomfortable now, AI will come at us no slower than it is now. And so it is exponentially going to be coming at us faster and faster. And this board meets once a month. Um, it's gonna outpace us for sure. So thank you for your continued work on this and trying to keep those of us who are a little slow at picking up all of this um informed. So we appreciate it. Um in our school site visits, um when we go out into the schools and we see schools, um I'm an example is coming to mind of two amazing teachers who were equally excited about what was going on in their classroom. And one teacher had lined paper and pencils only. That's it. And then the other teacher who was equally equally excited was using an AI writing coach. And both students I saw or both teachers were building on the relationships they had with kids. They were making the curriculum relevant for the students. They were pushing critical thinking for the students. So to build off of what Justice was saying and what you were hinting at too, those core values of how do we grapple with this, the teachers and the students' experiences were very different. If their parents asked, what did you do today? They would say two very different things. But I think those core principles and the excitement of the teacher, the professionalism of the teacher, and the learning from the students would be equally rigorous. And so I appreciate you trying to figure out a policy that helps us grapple with all of that. So um thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, um I just wanted to say thank you for the timeline, because that helps me visualize our next steps. Um, I know that at the summer conference for OSBA, they had several, like at some panels of districts that were implementing. And I remember um Tiger Twolleton had like the this piece that you have up on our screen, that they had this outline, and they had like a stop sign that it was yellow, like green, red for kids to know when they could use what. Um and then I, the last thing I'd say is, um through my work, we've had like eighty people apply for a position, for example. And I can start to tell, when I'm reading all these different um essays and things, I can totally tell who's used AI. Because they're starting at, when you have eighty people applying and you have the same phrasing coming, I'm like, oop, that one's AI, that one's AI. Because the phrasing just starts to come out the same with the, when you have a certain number of questions. But thank you for your work, and we will, I think, close this part and move on to our next. Board, are we okay to keep going? Anybody need a break? Anybody need a break? Okay. Um, thank you so much. Our next one is our bond accountability um committee. And glad you're here, Randy. Nice to see you. And Aaron is here. So this is our bond accountability um report, committee report.
Good evening, Dr. Baldaros and members of the board. My name is Randy Smith and I am the current chair of the bond accountability committee. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on the activities in our group. And I'd like to point out before I get started with my report that nothing in it is AI generated. We have a very unique committee, I think, in that we're diverse with our experiences. Uh, members have working expertise in real estate, financial management, education and education administration, building design and construction, and two of our members have actually participated in managing the delivery of a bond program for a different public entity. So it's really a wide breadth of experience. In addition, participating is board member Sanita Garg, and we appreciate her input, commitment and responsiveness to our activities. So thank you for that, Sanita. So what's the BAC opinion of performance at this point? Based on a review of financial status reports, project updates and other things prepared and presented by the district facilities staff in our meetings, we believe the delivery of the current BSD bond is meeting our BAC charter objectives and the school board program goals. I thought I could use a couple of examples maybe to point out some of the things that support that. Example number one, um, I've I've labeled buildings or building projects are never perfect. Unlike building a car where you get a lot of opportunities to do something, when you build a building, you only get one try. Consequently, they don't go perfectly, they simply don't. Um, and what typically happens is in a well-planned program, it includes contingency funds. And there are contingency funds in the bond program. But bond project program um projects have, the project delivery efforts to date have not required the team to spend planned contingency money as they expected. So recognizing this, the district facilities staff began an effort to reallocate a portion of the bond contingency to new projects and when ready, brought it to the board for review and approval. From my view, this demonstrated several things with regard to our charter and the board's goals. For example, efficient delivery that follows district facility management and control plans, transparent resource at resource allocation, and the new projects that were recommended will have a positive impact on student experience. All things that are part of either our charter or the board goals for this bond. Second example is from Beaverton High School. If you've been to the site, you know, it's a very tight site. There's not a whole lot of laydown area between all the building footprints that are on the new construction part of the building or part of the site. So the contractors really don't have any space to stage materials or work on things before they put them up. One thing the project team did was decide that that the tall building walls on some of the buildings that were constructed of metal studs and a sheathing um that then got the finished material on top of it would be constructed offsite. So what they did was they went to a warehouse, they built these section, larger sections on the ground, trucked them to the site and then tipped up large pieces of the walls at one time rather than building them on the ground and putting them up on site. This was a lot less construction or um mess on the site, they weren't interfering with other workers, and it was also a lot safer because they were on the ground. So it was a project innovation that reduces costs, improves safety and efficiency and is consistent with industry best practices, all good things. Uh, I think in, if you look back at your um goals for the bond, they're all part of that. In addition to financial and project updates, our meetings cover special topics. And one of the things we talked about recently was how tariffs might affect your projects. And as you know, by looking at the news, uh, the tariff impact is kind of hard to call right now. However, the good news is the project contractors and district facilities staff are being proactive in their evaluation of what might happen. And we are being informed as to what they're finding and what actions they may take. And as far as I know, and at least through our last meeting, there is really nothing to address yet, but when suppliers are affected by tariffs and contractors are affected by tariffs, there's the potential for something occurring. So to keep it short and simple, in summary, we're a diverse group. We've been provided useful information to assist us in achieving our charter objectives, and we believe our charter objectives are being met in delivering the bond. And thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you very much. Um, Randy, any comments or questions from the board? Susan?
I just have a comment. Um, this is probably my last um meeting where I'm getting an update on the bond accountability, from the bond accountability um committee. And went on the board for twelve years, I've followed two bonds, and I'm really impressed with especially this bond and how it's been run so smoothly and so well, and I just wanted to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Sanita?
I would agree with Susan. Um, I also agree with Randy, our committee members, the community members who are participating in this um bond accountability committee, they are great. They, um, the the level of experience that they have and the questions that they ask are amazing, so I'm very grateful for that. Um, also, in my school visits, I only hear good things about the things that you do in the classrooms. One thing that I get asked about is HVAC systems. Um, so if if you can give us a status kind of, you know, like, I know, it's a big ask, so you can take your time, but it would be nice, you know, like, how do you decide which school is going to get a new HVAC? I know it's an expensive uh project, right?
Okay, you mean like a future report, not like a current status of every school?
Yeah, like, what whatever you can tell us about the HVAC system, how do you decide a school gets it? How many schools, you know, like, I know that you have this third party, um, um, what do you call it? Like, they tell you exactly, what?
Database?
Database that tells you exactly. Yeah, it would be nice to hear, like, what is the status of BSD district in our schools, the HVAC system? Because not once, again and again, that's one of the asks.
Yeah.
You know, so it would be nice to hear from you guys.
Yeah, so uh, I'll give kind of a short answer because this could be a really long, complicated answer here, but it really depends on the school. Um, we have, you know, we have funds through our deferred maintenance program, uh, which we prioritize using the facilities condition assessment, which is what you're referring to. So it it looks at the, you know, the HVAC systems, all the different schools and, you know, what's working, what's not working, what's what's at end of life or beyond end of life. Um, and where do we, you know, it really helps us prioritize where do we need to look at um focusing those dollars. We we have a deferred maintenance budget in the bond that we use.
Yeah, and I know you've worked on HVAC systems with the current bond. It would be nice to know, like, which schools got that, you know, that would be really nice.
Yeah, we could certainly put together a a report on that because that it takes more information than I'm able to uh recall here exactly. But like this summer, we're doing a very, very large one at Aloha High School. So at Aloha High School, um, all the equipment in the school was original to the school and we're going through and replacing it. Next summer, we'll be doing Sunset High School, uh, not quite the same size as Aloha's, but uh, but a big one. And there's sections in the school that don't have air conditioning. Um, that's kind of our main focus right now, like.
Would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for all the work.
Yeah, Susan?
I I forgot to mention how grateful I am to our community for voting on the bond so that we can continue to do the work that we're doing.
Thank you. I just had, um, my first note was thank you to our community for the bond funds. Um, I love that we're on time and on budget, which is fabulous. Um, and I love that we have the contingency usage um in that we are able to support other projects along the way, and I'm excited that our last school is getting their air conditioning. Um, so um, then we'll have everybody with air conditioning. And I appreciate um those um weekly updates on what's happening in the bond because that's helping me kind of keep up with what's all the different pieces and the complexity. So thank you for your time, um, Chair, um, Randy, and to the committee as well. Any, I think with that?
Thank you. Um, we'll move to the Equity Advisory Committee report. So Dr. Regiani? And Dr. Tatiana? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Baldaros, Dr. Perez and board. Thank you for having us this evening. Shelley Regiani, executive administrator for the Office of Equity and Inclusion, and my colleague, Dr. Tatiana Savaios. This evening, we have the opportunity to share with you about the work of our Equity Advisory Committee here in the Beaverton School District. To start out with, a little bit of our background and starting with our purpose. The purpose of the Equity Advisory Committee is to inform the board and the superintendent about different things and activities and impacts that happen within the school district, how that lands with our students and impacts our student experience, particularly focusing on the impacts of policies and potential policies, how underserved students are experiencing our schools, sometimes specific situations, and then also advising on larger district-wide climate and initiatives. This all stems from Senate Bill seven thirty-two that was passed back in twenty twenty-one, and this year we are in our third year of our Equity Advisory Committee, second within this iteration in the way that it is formed right now.
By law, the committee is formed with a membership of um parents, staff, students and community members. And one of those members in the committee is also part of the Budget Committee. The membership must be primarily representative of underserved student groups, and they are selected through a process of application and recommended to the board, and the members are board approved. The Equity Committee um current members are a representation of the diversity in the district, and they provide voice for those who are um in in the education process. Part of the history of the Equity Committee is that in October of twenty twenty-four, we selected uh people that apply for the, be part of the committee, and we received a total of thirty-six applications. And uh, we proceeded with a blind review and assessment of those applications, and uh, we identified twelve members who were then brought to the board for approval. And they joined uh seven returning members that were part of the committee last year. As I mentioned before, this is a diverse group representing the community, and we currently have six students, five parents or family members, four community members, including the one member that is also part of the Budget Committee, and five staff members, two of them who are classified and three of them who are licensed. And this is the second year, as Shalit mentioned, um, where we have an advisory committee. The committee is facilitated by the staff of the administrative staff from the Office of Equity and Inclusion.
This year, the Equity Advisory Committee has focused on four key areas that we wanted to share with you and highlight the work of the group. Starting with the cell phone and device use policy, we'll go over that. We have talked about supporting immigrant and refugee students and families beginning right at the start of the school year and into the winter, focusing on the multilingual programs for our students with the multiple languages that are spoken within the district with a really strong focus on our bilingual programs, talking about generative AI from the perspective of the Equity Advisory Committee, and guidance for hosting cultural events, displays and celebrations within our schools as well.
So for the district program, the Equity Advisory Committee invited the multilingual department to learn more about the equity, uh, English language development co-teaching model. And we had the administrator for multilingual department, Dr. Toshiko Mauricio, presented and engaged in a conversation and uh of the of the program. In summary, uh, the discussion included the background and research on BSD, moving to a co-teaching model in support of multilingual students and in order to improve their um learning outcomes. And the studies from the pre-pandemic Northwest Education, uh, Education Northwest show promising progress on the students using a co-teaching model. So that was a part of the reason why the program was uh implemented. BSD aims to foster a more collaborative teaching environment emphasizing dual language instruction and a dual endorsement model. And the discussion from the Equity Advisory Committee aligned with and underscored the need for content teachers to have training in co-teaching model and the importance of addressing students' isolation and sense of belonging. And the Equity Advisor Committee was proud of the work of the multilingual department, which is center on the needs of students um and moving forward on that.
One of the beautiful parts about the Equity Advisory Committee is the flexibility of what is on the agenda. So each month, right prior to the meeting, not only will we have things on the agenda that will be such as the cell phone policy and device policy that will be talking about shortly, but our advisory committee has the opportunity to say, Dr. Savaios, I am really interested in hmm. And those topics come to the table as well. And that is how the topic that Tatiana just spoke about came to the Equity Advisory Committee and the invitation from uh to Dr. Mauricio to come and share what this is about. Uh, the members of the Equity Advisory Committee, as Tatiana mentioned, represent a vast cross-section of our district and understanding how the linguistic development happens for our students and how program development happens and the why was incredibly important. And for the Equity Advisory Committee members to also be able to give that feedback, so we're grateful uh to our departments who come and and who share their information. Our advisory committee has that flexibility to say, this is what I'm interested in speaking about. This is the current event for us. Interestingly, cell phone device policy was definitely one of the topics that the committee was interested in speaking about. We have a number of students who represent different schools, different high schools specifically across the the district, as well as staff classified and certified from multiple buildings. This year, prior to policy development, we started talking about the cell phone and device policy, what was existing and then what was happening in schools presently? How were how were our students and how were our staff impacted by the um the stopgap policy that our administrators were working on? We had the opportunity to discuss the practices, how we were going to be promoting thoughtful use with cell phones and other devices, and how really the committee really wanted us to be focusing on positive relationships and consistency. Those were the two pieces that we kept coming back to uh inside of our conversation, really talking about research, civil discourse and other classroom-specific and age-specific uh recommendations for appropriate use. It was a beautiful opportunity for the Equity Advisory Committee to engage in the same feedback process that we were seeing throughout the district as well, things that our schools were doing in terms of their feedback loops with their parent groups and also with their staff and with their students. We replicated that inside the Equity Advisory Committee as well in order to get that cross-section of thought and participation. Later on in the school year, we started talking about generative AI, perfect opportunity, we just have heard from both Steve and Stafford. We were able to, inside of the Equity Advisory Committee, talk about the specific things that were coming up for each of the individual members, from community members' perspectives, parent perspectives, staff perspectives and the student perspectives. Oh my goodness, what rich conversation. We spent nearly two hours discussing the ins and outs. And from that equity-centered perspective, what does it mean to have consistency? We heard some of the same things that Safa you had mentioned. What does it mean when students don't have the same access? How are we providing that access as a tool for learning versus a substitute for creativity? And that was a really important part of our conversation. The committee wanted to continue to encourage the district to establish those guidelines that encourage that responsible use, that beneficial use. It is beyond writing as a tool. There are so many other components, so how can we continue to be looking at it through that lens as we talk about academic growth, integrity, ethical use, as well as ways to make sure that there is access for our students that expands their learning? as well as ways to make sure that there is access for our students that expands their learning?
Another topic that was brought to the Equity Advisory Committee and was a discussion on supporting immigrant and refugee students and families' resources. We brought to them the draft or the proposed content for the online resources that were published in our website. And the Equity Advisory Committee engaged in a very thoughtful conversation about the resources and the supports that were available, things that the staff already knew and things that they needed to learn and know, and what resources were available in the community. So they can be presented to the the parents and the community members. They also discussed the experiences of immigrant and refugee students and families and the need that BSD had for publicly supporting them, especially in in our community with this demographic. Another thing was the it felt that the resources was critical in providing community-appropriate and information and recognized the the need for the community members to feel safe. And that was something that was reassured by staff and by administrators and by the school board too. There was also a feeling of hypers visibility of immigrants and refugees and the need for staff to use cultural, responsive and trauma-informed practices when working with these populations and supporting the students and families. And the Equity Advisory Committee was supportive of the district's approach to communication and training of administrators and office professionals. And their input early in the process was instrumental to the rollout of the information and the training that our office provided.
One of the most recent activities that the Equity Advisory Committee began was talking about guidance that we could provide school leaders, and school leaders is a very broad term. Any person who is leading a group of people, so this is your classroom paraprofessionals, your classroom teachers, your office professionals, as well as your building administrators, oftentimes our PTO leaders as well, providing guidance to schools when hosting cultural events and celebrations, whether it's an after-school activity or bringing in speakers, providing that lived experience to say, you know, when we do it this way, this is when all members can feel included. This is how we can do this in schools that lift up the home cultures of families linguistically, racially, culturally, that talk about celebrations, that talk about traditions, that can inform the community about what is beautiful inside of the Beaverton School District, all while making sure there are safeguards and safety for our students and families and creating a space where all feel included in all of the activities. We began that work recently this month with a rich discussion. One of the amazing parts about the diversity of lived experience within the group. Each person has a place to be able to say, and from my experience this, and from my experience this, and when I was in school, or now that I am in school, this is how it's landing with me. And all of those pieces went in to help form the initial draft. We're going to continue to work on that as a draft over the summer together and with other leaders and then bring it back to the Equity Advisory Committee for more nuance in the fall before we roll it out to administrators. That, in a brief nutshell, describes the work and the lift of the Equity Advisory Committee. People who have said, yes, please, I want to volunteer my time, my energy and my spirit to be able to dedicate it to the Beaverton School District to talk about things that really impact all students and really focus through this lens of educational equity and assuring that this committee is working to remove the barriers that might stand in the way from all students reaching their full potential. Thank you.
Any questions from our? Pammy?
Thank you. Did the Equity Advisory Committee consider the SRO program?
We did not this year. That wasn't as part of our timing. We knew that our community members and our students were going to be having opportunity for and our staff, opportunity for input through the survey. We did mention it and making sure that our community members and our students and staff knew that the survey was coming, but we did not engage specifically on that as a topic.
I would love to have this committee be, I would also, I would like to have heard their voice as well on this issue. I know that we did hear from, you know, through a survey and through a few small groups. But this seems like a cross-section that I would really like to hear from on some of these issues that we kind of wrestle with that are a little messy, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for your time. Really appreciate that of your time and that of the committee members, of students. I was excited to see like nine different students on the committee.
Oh, and the wisdom they share. Wow.
I think that makes it powerful to hear from our students and have their voices on there. Ugana?
Just thought about this. A quick question. Are are our community parents, students aware of this committee? If so, are they, do they have the liberty to contact the committee if they believe their students have been marginalized in one way or the other? Do they have that liberty to contact the committee?
Thank you for that question. A couple of things. The Equity Advisory Committee does not have a general mailbox, but the Office of Equity and Inclusion does. So, community members can and do email us when they have something that they would like to have brought forward to the Equity Advisory Committee or if they have general questions. The Equity Advisory Committee will talk about specific instances, again, without using names or leaving people to be hyper-visible or vulnerable by disclosing very specific information and of course, using the FERPA guardrails firmly in place. Then I would say the other piece that the committee is also very aware of and very supportive of is the bias incident, the bias incident reporting process that we have in the district. So if a committee member receives information from a neighbor, another student, somebody within their sphere about something that they felt was this is harmful to me and it fit within that that place of reporting a bias incident, they direct them. Some of our committee members have definitely told us, yes, I've directed them to the bias incident report. The bias incident reporting is a way that across the district, and we have this advertised in multiple places and throughout our schools where any student, community member or staff member can share. And it is something that immediately comes into our office and something that is addressed immediately. So that is the way that they are able to assist our community members. You're welcome.
Susan?
So that triggers a question for me in terms of dashboard, to see, you know, if there's a way of seeing, you know, like the numbers of people that are reporting a bias incident to get an idea of, you know, how, if it's pervasive or not pervasive and the types, if it's possible to to share the types of biases that is happening in the school district?
We were able to share some initial information at the start of this year. And by doing so, it helped us shape the way that we're collecting the information this year. Sometimes we'll get information to a bias report and we take everything seriously. And we are also going to say, this one about the school lunch was not about a bias incident. It was about, I didn't enjoy the sauce. That's just a for example. And then there are some things that are incredibly serious and we definitely take that very seriously. What we do, we provide to teaching and learning and we provide to Dr. Balderez and to the the cabinet level, the information that is shared from our community members and our students and our staff about bias incidents. And then we are able to put that into, it's not a dashboard, they're that is more sophisticated than we need. We're able to put it into a spreadsheet, so we're able to share that information. Your question about if we're able to see a pattern. Anytime that Tatiana and I, when looking at the information that's coming in, if there's more than one, that our eyebrows are raising, like, is this a pattern? After any incident, we are in immediate contact with the school principal. So they have the opportunity to immediately address that.
I guess my question is, as a school board member, I would like to understand more of like what's happening, what, you know, what types of incidents are happening? I don't need to know the particular incidents, you know, per se, because I know that can be damaging. But I would want to understand more of what, you know, is happening in the schools. As you say, because, you know, we're, you know, maybe there's some tangents to policies, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess that's what I'm asking, if that can happen more than just once a year, like that kind of reporting?
It certainly can. And we can certainly share that with you prior to the end of your term, so that you have that that look. Absolutely. Happy to.
He'll mail it to you. Thank you. I think, yeah, getting that information, the big picture information to see where if the policy change needs to be made or if there's recommendations on that kind of policy change level would be helpful. But thank you so much for your time and for the presentation. And thank you to the committee members for their time as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, let me get through, we have financial update and consent agenda, and then I was going to take a break. So we have Mike Schofield for our monthly financial update. I know we've talked a lot about budget today.
So I'll be brief. We spent an hour earlier this evening taking a deeper dive into the finances of the school district. So I'll keep this at a very high level. Gentle reminder, I said it earlier, and I want to say it again, forecast is tomorrow morning, the May forecast. That's what the legislature will use to build their budgets for the state. So we're going to get our popcorn out early tomorrow morning and take a look at that forecast. So we're hoping for some good news and hoping for some resources that the legislature can put to work for schools. So that, secondly, in your reports on our investment reports, there's a change this month. You might see a little color and some other things in the report that wasn't there in the past. We have changed software. The software we used to use is is pretty old and and not supported in the way we'd like it to be. So we've switched software that we're using. We tried to make this report look as similar to prior reports as you have seen in the past. There are some modest changes and you'll see those. And we'll continue to refine those. So if you look at them and you want to give me any feedback, that'd be great in terms of things you'd like to see or you're not seeing. Happy to take those comments and suggestions to improve that report. Finally, early this morning, we were in the market selling over $400 million worth of School District General Obligation Bonds. That's the remaining authorization from the 2022 voter-approved levy. There was strong demand for Beaverton School Bonds in the market this morning, which was good news for us. When I talked to the underwriter about it, it was, you know, it's due to a couple of things. One, we have a strong credit rating as a school district, which is good to have. And another one is our our strong reputation in the market in terms of us as a community, local or a diverse tax base here locally that that we can draw upon. Good financial management from the Board as we as we prepare for to sell these bonds, we we go through a rating agency presentation with both Standard and Poor's and Moody's. And we spend at least an hour talking through financial practices of the district, our ability to pay, what's going on with enrollment, what do we think of tariffs, what do we think of federal dollars moving forward? So we we maintained our strong credit rating through that, which is important when you think about it because a good credit rating gives you better rates. So similar to, you know, if you don't have great credit, that car loan might cost you a little bit more in interest. This is good value for our taxpayers to have a strong credit rating. And it benefits our taxpayers by having them pay lower interest rates than than had we not had that. So and through the credit rating, it was noted from both strong financial management on the Board's part the last several years, specific comment from Moody's investors, K-12 education overall is on a negative credit watch from Moody's because of all the, I could list it, right? All the stuff we're also going through, declining enrollment, uncertainty on federal funding, uncertainty on funding in general moving forward. What's what's the impact of federal legislation going to be at the local level? All those factors, for that reason, overall, K-12 is on a negative watch. Beaverton School District is on a positive watch because of the Board's leadership in financial management, how we've handled declining enrollment and how we've how we've maintained reserves. And we have a plan to spend those reserves down in a responsible way. So credit to you and the Board. Successful sale. That was good to get that out of the way this morning.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, well, thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Well, now, our next piece is our consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the Raleigh Hills contract removed?
I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted with the exception of the items that were removed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously. I'm wondering if we take a little break and then we'll come back for items for action? Okay, great. So we'll take, it's.
We'll come back and do the Raleigh Hills item.
Okay, great. That's the first one. It's 9:06, so if we come back at 9:10? Our first item for, or we're starting the meeting back up at 9:13. Our first item for action is approving Raleigh Hills project furniture and equipment contract that was pulled from the consent agenda. Casey Walsh is available to provide more information before we vote on approval. Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
Yes, you do. I move to approve the contract authorization for the Raleigh Hills Elementary Contract as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Tammy?
Thank you. My concern is that we are moving farther down the road, committing ourselves to a particular build-out with a destination in mind that may not suit what we intend to use the building for after we hear from the brick consultants, after we hear from the long-range planning facility committee. And I know some of these things are desks and other things that can be repurposed, but some of them are building out bathrooms. Are we building them for little people? Are we building them for big people? Are we putting in fountains? Are we putting in desks, you know, built-in cabinets that are for kindergartners or high schoolers? So I have a concern spending this amount of money for a project that we haven't decided what we're doing with it. So I would like to delay until we have more information, rather than risk having to have costs down the road to refit buildings for the purpose that we decide in the future that we would want to use it for.
So I think we have it open for questions and comments, so thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Susan?
Well, no, I just have a question of why, I mean, we still, we are going to utilize part of the school, so why wouldn't we furnish it? I'm confused by...
Well, I guess my concern is that if we're building a school for K through five kids, we would probably put in little toilets and shorter water fountains versus, you know...
I'm sorry for like, I'm tired, and so I might be a little less patient right now, but we are building a school for K-5, so there is going to be that. And my understanding is, we're not building out the whole school, because that was part of the plan, not to. So I...
Well, I think what I want to hear is like, I'll let everybody kind of give their comments, and if there's a question, we have Casey here that can answer if there's any specific questions. Yes, Sunita?
I would like to, Casey, to tell us about what this furniture, is that for like, the small school that like, what we had decided that we are building? Like, can you please speak about that?
This is, FFNE is Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, so it has a wide range of things, from student desks, teacher desks, chairs, office furniture, cafeteria tables, shelving, library furniture, et cetera. The, I also want to remind the board, this is not to allocate the budget. The budget was already allocated for this. This is to award the contract to the vendor to purchase the stuff. We're also trying to do this to get ahead of some of the tariffs that are potentially coming down the road. It will be potentially more expensive if we delay. All of, the majority of these items could also be potentially repurposed if there was some other decision. But we need to build, in the bond team's opinion, the school that we have designed and are moving forward with, and this is just one component of awarding the contract.
So I'm hearing you say you are moving forward...
Sorry, one second. I, is that the end of your question, or is that?
I was...
No, no, for Sunita, I don't know if she finished, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So you're saying you, the furniture that you're buying is for the 700-capacity school, or is it for the smaller capacity?
No, we would build it for the current capacity, but again, we're also purchasing furniture district-wide for other buildings, so there's not much of a risk for not being able to utilize this equipment, because we have funds set aside that we're accumulating each year to replace furniture district-wide. This is part of our district's furniture standard for this, so this, all of this equipment would be used.
And there is a need for it in the rest. There is always need for this.
Oh, yeah, we have lots of need.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Tammy, and then Ugana?
So, I just, so just to...
My conversations with the community, with Dr. Baldairis, there are options for this building that are, go beyond a K through five. It could be a K through eight, in which case we would still want, you know, things for little people. It could, you know, could we consider it to be an option school? Could we, you know, could we have it be Base, which doesn't have a great campus right now? Could it be some of our, you know, special ed-type programming? So the curiosity that I've been having and that I've been hearing from community is that we haven't had that full discussion about what this, how this building would be used. And my concern is that we are going down a path that is going to somewhat commit us to a particular use, and I'm hearing from community, like, maybe we should stop and have a conversation such that we are, as board members, acting in, you know, good financial stewards for the district, and that we don't end up wasting money retrofitting. So I think that's the concern I've been hearing from the community, is that we haven't decided, we haven't heard from Brick, we haven't heard from the long-range facility planning committee, and we are still moving down a path, as you said, that you have been given marching orders to continue down the path to build the building as it was specked out. And so my concern is that we are going to run into financial costs down the road if we end up deciding something different.
Thank you, Tammy.
That's not accurate. We won't run into costs for the FFNE portion of the purchase. We'll be able to reutilize those items.
Ugana?
Quick question. When you mentioned that you could repurpose the furniture, does that mean they could be used in other buildings in case it does not work for Raleigh?
Absolutely.
Can you use this? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Justice?
I guess my question would be, and this is my understanding, we have a bond, too, and we have a part of that bond was to deliver a building. The, if, what is the, what is the impact if we do not build a building for us as a district? How does that impact our financials? Because that, to me, this conversation and framing, and I'm sorry, Casey, because I don't want to put this on you, frames the entire exercise in a, ever to say, you know, one, my understanding of the statutory authority of the long-range planning committee is not necessarily the individual, like, articulation of facility, like, building, meaning what we put in the bond, what was approved in the bond to be built, is related to the bond, the long-term, long-term facilities committee is, one, not under the statutory authority of the board, meaning we don't direct its action and its research, but it is to give information to the district on not just any one building, but every building and facility and equipment within our district. So when we get to this conversation about this building and this equipment, the, my understanding, we had a conversation, I believe it was the November meeting, was that the build, like, one, that we need to complete the process in order to meet our bond obligation, that if we don't do that, that there is actually larger negative ramifications for our district. If I'm incorrect, please someone let me know. Two, that some of the conversation there was, and I'm, again, I'm trying to operate from memory, was right, to spec out the building, it's close to meeting our need with some space and flexibility, meaning to make changes if there's real specific programmatic decisions made, but primarily, it will be an elementary school, however the programs within that elementary school context, with some space for flexibility. Is, I don't see this particular contract as outside of my understanding of that conversation, which I believe was the November meeting. I may be wrong.
You're correct.
Okay. And so when we get here, I, I just want to be transparent with the committee, I'm very frustrated to return to this, not with, as if this board intentionally or unintentionally is trying to move something outside the scope of what was agreed to. I understand the frustration, but it bothers me. So my question is, one, what is the ramifications if we pause purchase of equipment, pause delivery of the building that we are obligated to build via the bond that we purchased or we created? And then with that, yeah, those two questions, and then I'll just be silent.
For the, as far as FFNE portion of it, it'll just result in higher costs down the road, because it'll also impact the construction schedule and the way that the building is lined out with subcontractors and those types of things. We will still have to purchase FFNE in some form or fashion. There will just be unfinished, potentially could be unfinished portions of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding is, from what I'm hearing and from my understanding of what we have in front of us, is we are definitely not closing any schools right now. This is not a decision about closing any schools, or, you know, bringing in 8,000 children into one school. This is a decision about buying furniture for this school that is being built, and that's going to need furniture. We're trying to get ahead of the tariffs, we're going to need this furniture. If for some reason things change, we will use the furniture somewhere else. We have other buildings that are in need of furniture as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. This has no impact on the, how many students or staff we have in the building, or capacity or flexibility.
Okay, so I'm going to call a vote. All in favor of approving the contract, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
So we will, this passes, six to one. Our next item for action is approving the substitute teacher agreement. Carrie will be here to provide more information for us before we vote for approval. So let's first, actually, let's, do I hear a motion to approve the substitute teacher agreement?
I move to approve the terms of the collective bargaining agreement for licensed substitutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Carrie, I'm going to hand it over for you to give us some information, please.
Great, thank you so much. So just a little bit of background about this. The Beaverton Education Association is the association that represents our guest teachers or licensed substitutes, and the district and BEA entered into negotiations for the collective bargaining agreement that covers licensed substitutes in April. There were four meetings in the month of April and came to a conclusion at the end of April. In the past week, the membership of the licensed substitutes unit of the Beaverton Education Association has voted to ratify the contract with a strong support for that, and it now comes to the school board for approval. So there are a number of language changes, but some key provisions that were agreed to in the tentative agreement that is now up for board approval are pay increases for all licensed substitutes that amount to, if you add them up, it's an increase of 14% over three years. If you do the math, it compounds to about 14 and a half percent over three years. It also provides some new benefits, including access to the employee assistance program for subs who qualify and participate in the district's insurance program. It also provides an article codifying sick leave in the contract, and it also provides paid training, such as safety care training being available to substitutes who are in long-term assignments in specialized, special education classrooms. Has a number of other provisions as well, and finally, it is a three-year contract, so it provides through the end of the 27, 28 school year, and we would enter into negotiations again in that year for the successor contract.
Any comments, questions? Well, I think this is super exciting that we have the contract, and it was for meetings, and that we have the benefits, the pay increase, the sick leave, paid training, and the three-year contract. So thank you for that work. So do I, we'll take it up for a vote now. All in favor of approving the substitute teacher agreement, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 With that, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Our next item is the approval for the language arts curriculum. Do I have a motion to approve the language arts curriculum?
It's nice to see everybody, just so you know. I move to approve the resolution adopting the Savas My Perspectives Curriculum for the Secondary Language Arts and English Language Proficiency and Vista for focused ELD settings and authorizing the purchase as recommended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Made you stay till 9:30. Just thank you to the committee for all the work that was put into this, very thoughtful. It was great to hear from the teachers and their input on what they thought of the curriculum, and from the students, and I'm excited to see this being implemented for adolescent literacy. So with that, we'll call a vote. All in, all in favor of approving the selection curriculum, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your time. Now we'll go back, yeah, thank you. We'll go to our school board calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the school board calendar? We have Carrie Delft to answer questions after.
I move to approve the school board meeting calendar as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Carrie? Okay, none. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the motion about the school board calendar, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Carrie. Um, the next one is Mike Schofield with the budget calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, do I have a motion to approve the budget calendar?
I move to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget calendar as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the budget calendar? Okay, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor of approving the motion about budget calendar, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, that also passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Our next item is board policy revision presented by Chief Staff Carrie Delft and General Counsel Camelia. We have three board policies, um, JFCEB, personal electronic devices, J, GCBDA, family and medical leave, and GCBDC, domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault, bias, and stalking. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the revision, revisions of board policies that are just named?
I move to approve the policy revisions as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments on these from... With that, we'll, um, call for a vote. All in favor of approving the mo- the motion about the policy revisions, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Um, our final item is youth service program presented by Casey, um, Wallatich. Um, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the youth service program contract?
I move to affirm the continuation of the youth services program and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract renewals for continued delivery of services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments? Yeah, um, we'll have Sunita, then Ugana, Tammy.
All I wanna say is that, uh, from all what I have heard, that YSOs do a great job in our BSD district. Uh, it was nice to see an officer come in and talk today, Officer Massey. That is the level of approachability that students who feel threatened should have when they see YSOs. And the slides that you presented are great, and I would, one thing that I would really like to see is that, um, you know, the recommendations that has been provided by the students, the parents, the staff are, are taken into consideration and, and the board be told about, like, what is being done so that we also feel that, yes, the relationship is becoming better because when I go to the school visits, I hear from the staff all the time, I wish, we can't service without them, you know? So, they are doing a great job, but at the same time, we are also hearing from the community and the staff who feel hesitant about it. So, let's move towards that, take those recommendations and put them in, you know, uh, put them in action. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sunita. Ugana?
Thank you, um, for the report that was brought to us, uh, at the last meeting. Um, and I appreciate all the effort that was put into gathering surveys and, um, everything that was done to get the reports, um, ready. Um, four years ago, uh, today, before I got on this board, um, I heard overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly from our community members that the presence of the YSOs, SROs at that time did not make them feel safe and that, um, sentiment has not changed. It has been four years and it has not changed. And when I looked at the report that was presented to us, I pointed it out that our most impacted students, their voices were critically missing from the report. It did not, um, capture or reflect the temperature of our community members, at least my community. Um, with that said, I do not believe that I would serve my community well if I were to vote yes tonight. And, um, the matter fact that some students feel safe, um, with the presence of YSO, the notion that some people feel safe and some do not feel safe, then it is a flawed notion to say that all students feel safe. If, uh, a, a, a fraction of our student community does not feel safe with the presence of SROs, then coming to say that all students feel safe with their presence is a flawed, uh, notion. So, with that said, I believe that our students would be better served with more mental health intervention, more counselors in the schools, more social workers in the schools. And I will not be here, um, to hear more about what is being done. I will not be here to get updates. What I can control tonight is my vote. So, tonight, I choose to vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ugana. Tammy?
Um, for people reading along at home, um, last time when we were first presented, um, the data, um, some, some was missing from that original presentation, um, and so I'd just like to note for the record that, uh, three point five percent of LGBTQ plus, um, high school students feel unsafe and five percent feel very unsafe around SROs. So, to Director Enyaya's point, um, I think that that is a number that is large and, and really can't be ignored. Um, the data from the Beaverton Police Department, um, continues to show bias. This current semester, eight percent of referrals by BPD officers to Washington County General Department were black students. Last semester, it was nineteen percent. Black students make up three percent of our student body. It is clear to me that we are perpetuating racial bias and causing harm with this program, which is consistent with the national data on SRO programs. And as some of us stated during the previous work session on this topic, the survey was conducted with and presented with a bias toward continuing the program. The declaration that there was, quote, overwhelming and consistent support for SROs is laughable when fully seventy-five percent of students do not support the program. The only witnesses we heard during that work session were administrators, and I understand their desire to continue to work with police. It is less work-intensive than implementing a restorative practice. And we do not have any insight into the reasons or demographics of when we, the district, are calling the police. I've asked for this data for a year, and I'm now being told that if we renew the program, the district will look into collecting that data. But the data we already have is damning. I can see why the police department was so slow to get that data to us. Just so the community knows, the first time I had access to this data on arrests and referrals was Sunday. This, this Sunday. Despite asking for this data for months, despite the fact that quarterly data reporting on arrests and referrals is required by the IGA. The city is failing to uphold its end of the IGA. And now the district is arguing that we can't afford not to have the SRO program because of the cost of the ancillary services provided. So, let's, I recommend changing the IGA to reflect that we just want those services, like background checks. And we can make it plain that this is a shakedown by the mayor and the county as they shift the cost of policing onto our schools. This is about racial justice and the harm that we are perpetuating. SROs are not the answer to bullying. SROs do not prevent school shootings. In fact, three times more people die in a school shooting in the presence of an SRO. Armed law enforcement officers do not belong anywhere near our children. No amount of desensitization will undo the epigenetic trauma experienced by some of our students. No amount of equity training will undo the fact that armed law enforcement officers can escalate a situation through the unstated threat of arrest and prosecution or threat of bodily harm as evidenced by the battle gear they wear every time they enter our schools. We need more counselors and social workers, not more intimidation and veiled threats of harm. I'm a no vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Melissa?
Thank you. Um, my comments will be similar to what I've said, um, last time. Um, and in our school visits, our behavioral health and wellness teams for our school psychs, our, um, um, our SSSs, substance use support staff, many of our BHNW staff see our YSOs as colleagues, as they're in their efforts to be able to meet the needs of our students. Um, our footprint is enormous in the Beaverton area, and we will have victims on our school grounds, whether that's car accidents, vandalism, threat, assault, assaults, or, um, theft or threats. And we're going to need to call the police. And the police who come to our schools should have additional training to serve the needs of our young people and their families, and our YSOs have that training. Our police who come to our schools should have experience to be, and not be new to law enforcement, and our YSOs have that experience. Police who come to our schools should have reduced caseloads to help offer the time needed to address complicated situations, and our YSOs have those lower cas- caseloads. And doing the ride-alongs, um, with our YSO, I saw time and time again that the YSO worked with school leadership to intercept traditional criminal considerations and offer pathways and partnership with the administration to heal and move students toward, um, productive pathways, um, for their participation in our school communities. That doesn't mean the program is perfect, I know that, um, and I really appreciate the recommendations that were offered in the gap analysis. Um, and I appreciate that humility and, um, looking forward to growth and collaboration. And I hope that even with the language that's being used, the YSO and the teams after this vote, um, we can come together and work together to even better serve our students and families.
Uh, Susan?
I'm gonna echo Melissa, um, when I think about YSOs and think that we, and know that we've made a lot of progress with our behavioral health and wellness program to offset a lot of behaviors that used to go to, directly to, you know, the police, whether it was, uh, Beaverton Police or the Sheriff Department, and I wanna give our school district a lot of credit for supporting the mental health of our students that has mitigated a lot. I mean, I saw a lot over the last twelve years in terms of behaviors that were very severe. And I really think that, believe it or not, SROs in the schools and being trained, and I think specifically being trained, um, for schools has made a difference. Again, I would agree with Melissa, there's, there's a lot more to happen to build trust. I think a lot of this is building trust. Um, I think we need to do, build trust, no matter if we're talking about SROs or, um, just about anything in, in our school district. Um, we need to build the trust, um, instead of working on dividing so much. Um, so, I'm going to vote in favor of, uh, continuing SROs in our schools, um, but also always hoping that we're, uh, focusing on restorative justice for our students.
Justice?
I have strong, um, viewpoints and perspectives on this program and some of the other intersecting issues that relate to this. I appreciate the work that has been done, uh, to, to try to get us into a place where the information is, um, more on par, as I stated, more on par where, at least what it should be, reporting. Um, also, you know, reflective of my, my concerns in the past, a- around this program and in our fe- our previous conversation, that, um, if expectations of sharing, uh, of discussing issues that come up with officers are not consistent with our capacity to report, uh, w- we need to make those adjustments. And I'm also, uh, and I'll just say it structurally, like, in a very serious way, morally conflicted, um, I, uh, I don't really wanna make too many more comments on this. I'd rather my vote speak for itself. Um, but I think as a, we, we are in a position as a board to make a decision, um, on something that is very broad and much more complicated than the scope of our, our operations. And I'm also frustrated the amount of airtime it takes us to deal with this and how much time it takes away from some of the other deeper, more complicated things around discipline, structure, education, funding, and everything else. It's very important, but it bothers me. So, um, I don't have any other comments. We, once we, if, uh, whenever we call to the vote, I will make my vote at that time and I'll speak for itself.
Um, first of all, I, um, thank Casey and the team for, um, our, and Carrie, um, for the comprehensive safety plan that we have in Beaverton, which is inclusive of our behavioral health and wellness teams, of social workers, counselors, um, of, um, of the intensive trainings and thought that's gone into how do we best support our students in the sense of, um, when there are some critical, uh, pieces that come up. And what I heard from the critical role, um, that YSOs would play in all this is that they're working on, um, safety assessment and investigations. They're working on threats, when there's threats, whether that's social media or to our buildings as a whole. They're working on serp- sexual incident response protocols. They're working, um, on investigations around sexual assault and Title IX. They're working around, um, investigations around child abuse and neglect. They're working in investigations that are criminal matters. Um, they're doing student welfare checks, and when they have those relationships with our buildings and our administrators and our students, they can go in and have a conversation with the families, and they have, from visiting schools, um, and I, and seeing them in the buildings, talking to principals, talking to the kids around there. Um, I heard of several incidents where they were critical in ensuring student safety, um, in student welfare checks. Um, they're also supporting when missing students are, when a missing, a student goes missing. So, for me, this safety plan for our district, the YSOs are one critical piece of a much larger system of safety, which includes, like I said, the behavioral health and wellness, the, the, um, cameras that we're getting from our bond, the Raptor system, um, the continued support and, um, of restorative justice trainings for our staff. Um, and I also wanna thank the city for taking on the cost, an additional cost, so that our cost is not increasing this year when, um, we vote, if we were to vote to approve these. So, with that, um, I think I will call, oh, would you like to add something? So, I'm gonna call and stop.
I just wanted to, like, just hearing, like, the conversations going on. Um, at our student advisory meeting last month, we were talking about this and we were talking about how the role of SROs are really important and students know that, but students really don't approach them, and that's the gap, like, students need to approach them or SROs need to approach them. So, they're more comfortable talking to each other and just understanding what they're there for.
And I think that that was something, um, that was brought up in the report, like, what's that? How do we communicate to students? And, um, and that was brought up when you had those, the student advisory committee that you met with all the students, right, um, that are representative of all of our schools? So, um, thank you for sharing that. And then we know that there's a few other recommendations that were made in the report that we can also work on. But with that, I will, um, go ahead and call a vote. Um, all in favor, uh, of the motion about the youth service contract, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Um, that's three. Um, all opposed, oh, four, that's four, sorry. All opposed, please raise your hand and say no.
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 Three. Um, with that, the motion passes four to three. Um, thank you. We will move, um, to our items for future action. We'll start with boundary adjustments with Casey, and we'll provide information about that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, while this is not unheard of to talk about a, um, school district boundary shift, it is fairly rare. Um, there, uh, we were approached by, uh, PPS, Portland Public Schools, and a developer. There is a, a twelve-home development going on in the northeastern part of our district that currently that development resides, uh, of students going into Portland Public Schools. The request has been made, uh, The request has been made to us to change the boundary to include those students into the Beaverton School District, so that those 12 homes would come into the Beaverton School District, primarily due to location. It's quite a ways for those students, for PPS to serve those students and transport them. So there's a bunch of materials in your packet that you can review. It is a fairly minor boundary adjustment that will serve, should students reside in those homes, will serve them better because they're much closer to the services in the Beaverton School District than in Portland Public. It should also be noted that as students may move into those, currently, there are some students in there. We're on, we're working with PPS on an inter-district transfer or out-of-district transfer, so those students are being served by our schools already. This will just solidify and permanently change that for future students that come in to those homes or new students that come into those homes for those 12 homes. So happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions on that for our team or board? Thank you. Having more students is a good thing. And it sounded like for them, the transportation was really hard to get them to their schools.
That's the, that's the primary reason, I believe.
Thank you, Casey. Now we'll have, up next, we'll have Carrie. And we'll have a vote on approval for this item in the next meeting in June, but it's a topic around Northwest Regional ESD member.
Thank you. Yes, this tonight is an item for future action, so we'll be asking the board to vote on a decision in the next meeting. This is one of those things that the board votes on as a body. The Northwest Regional ESD has a number of board positions that are elected by the member boards in the area. Beaverton intersects with two of those zones, and one of those is up for election this year. The Northwest Regional ESD went through their, their application or nomination process for people to run for this position. One person applied. It is the current incumbent in the position, Michelle Graham. And so the Beaverton School Board has asked whether BSD will support this candidate for the open position for another four years. That will come to the board for a vote in June, and then that vote will be submitted as BSD's vote to Northwest Regional ESD.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Carrie.
Next is board policy revisions with Camille and Carrie, IKF graduation requirements and GCBDD around sick leave.
All right, board members, tonight we have two policies for your consideration to wrap up our policies this year. The first one, GCBDD slash GCDB, I said it on there twice, we'll fix that. This is the sick time policy. It's a new policy for us, not necessarily new from OSBA. Several years ago, Oregon Legislature passed legislation that provides for sick time if an employee meets certain qualifications around hours worked and the size of the organization. Most of our employees, in terms of sick time, are covered by our collective bargaining agreements, but we do have some employees that fall within this statute. And so we felt like it was a good move to articulate what their rights are around sick time in a policy. The second policy that we're bringing forward is IKF. This is our graduation requirements. The main updates to this policy are, there's a couple. We are updating it, so it aligns with new language around the personal financial education requirements. It is also changing the verbiage that we use around high school completion options. We no longer call it an alternative certificate. It's now called a certificate of attendance. So we are altering some of that language in here to align with the statute and those name changes. And then there is also some language that we have put in to address the legislatures, or excuse me, the, it's ODE that makes the rulemaking body around waiving some of the graduation requirements for students to get a full IB diploma, acknowledging that they're doing quite a bit to get that full IB diploma. So that is the updates that you see in that one.
Are there any questions? Tammy?
Thank you. About the sick leave policy, I'm curious, it does say, the first paragraph, that our CBA covers the majority of our workers. I guess I'm curious about the, the limit of five days. Does that, is, is that true for the employees get covered by the CBA and other, like, do all of the district's employees? I see you're.
I'm trying to find where you're indicating.
Where did I see five days for? Forty hours of accrued sick time may be used in a fiscal year, so.
So all of that verbiage is statutory in terms of those pieces.
Okay, so it is not.
Around this guarantee of sick time.
It would not be possible for the district to grant more than 40 hours of paid sick leave?
We already grant more than 40 hours of paid sick leave to our bargaining units and those groups. This type of sick time, I know there's all the, there's sick time and then there's sick leave, and those words get kind of mushed interchangeably. Oregon's sick time, it's, it's basically a protection for, for employees who, you know, might work at a, an employer that doesn't offer, doesn't have a benefits plan, doesn't offer those sorts of things. So the state has come in and said, if you are a certain size and you have this many employees, we are going to mandate that employers provide you with a certain minimum amount of sick time. The majority of our employees get more than that because we have negotiated that in our CBAs. This would probably apply to our casual labor folks who are occasional workers, those, those sorts of folks that are not in a bargaining unit. It's a small portion of our employees, and we are doing the statutory minimum.
What about confidential employees?
Confidential employees have, they don't have a contract, but what they have is a, is a statement of benefits, much like our administrators do, like the ABSA agreement. It's a, it's a document that covers their benefits. The confidential employees, their benefits align pretty similarly to the administrators. So they get sick leave and they also get vacation and PTO, all built into that.
Okay, so this is just like a floor for a very few number of employees.
Correct.
Yes. Great. That is all my questions on this policy. I do have some on the other one.
Any more questions on this one? On our next policy, then, graduation requirements, any questions on that one? Tammy?
Thank you. I read this and I put some questions into the portal. They were answered, and I'm really satisfied with those answers. And I just wanted to say for the record, because these, these diplomas that are modified or the certificates of attendance, my curiosity was around a potential, you know, conceiving like of an abuse of that, where this kid's trouble, we, we're just gonna put him on a modified diploma plan and, or, you know, what. I, I found that there are so few students that end up with these diplomas. I, you know, not that I was thinking things were abused, but I just want to say for the record that, that the number of students that received the modified diploma last year were 64, which is a very small number. And then the certificate of attendance, which is really limiting, it's really can't be used for entering the military service or, you know, any, in any way of like saying, hey, I graduated from high school. There were only 14 students. So this is a really small number. And so I feel really comfortable that this is a reasonable plan for those students that are just not going to, you know, successfully complete our diploma path for them. So I just wanted to acknowledge, thank you for answering those questions. That was great. Thank you.
I had a question, but it might be a weird, but I just was, I didn't understand on the diploma one. When it talked about the 504 plans, I think it's like the third, one, two, three, on the fourth page, the IEP, it's in blue, the IEP or 504 team must inform students' parents that use of modify, modification of an assessment will result in invalid assessment. And then right below, students not on IEP or a Section 504 plan may not receive modified statewide assessments. And that might be, I just was wondering around, I thought that if you had like an IEP or a 504, then you could have a modified, that was okay to have a modified assessment?
If they're not on an IEP or 504 plan, then they can't have a modified assessment. If they do have an IEP or a Section 504 plan, then that could be addressed and that could possibly be.
So is that sentence wrong then?
No, the blue actually says they can if they are on the 504 IEP. The black that you referred, referring to says students not on an IEP.
Oh, got it. I missed the note. Okay, so that was, I was confused. I was reading both. I'm like, I thought they could, and then I'm seeing it's not. Got it. I think that was my, that was my, I think that was my, my only question. I confused myself. Okay, great. Any other questions on that? Thank you. That was our final topic. And the last thing on the agenda is the comments and committee reports from board members. Who would like to go first?
Susan?
So I didn't have a question about that policy that was just discussed, but I.
Oh, sorry, I missed. Do you want to come back?
No, I don't have a question about it, but it's more a comment I'm gonna make about students that get left behind in our school district because they don't fit a certain, they don't fit a certain mold. And the, the students on 504 or IEPs could have a mental, I mean, a lot of them, or many, I shouldn't say a lot, might have a mental health issue that stops them from completing, let's say, their, their high school process. And I can remember, I'm just gonna kind of ramble a little bit, sitting here when we're talking about ninth grade on track to graduate, thinking about how difficult it was for my own child to go to school. And thinking the way we track things and for parents and for students that hear that and feel, you know, no, their kid's not on track to graduate on time. And how we look at things and how we measure things makes it really hard for our students to not feel like they're failing because they don't fit a certain model, a certain statistic. And I think that's really sad. And I think that we're losing students that have a lot of potential, but they feel like they're failing and so they give up.
We're actually bringing, for our next meeting, we'll have a conversation about our supports for students that aren't following a straight, short path to graduation. So we'll be hearing some of the supports that we have.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm glad to hear that, Karen. I'm just sad it's taken so long to get there. And it's taken much longer than I've been on the school board. And we talk about mental health being a priority. And, you know, I'm not gonna say that I didn't have hesitation about SROs because I think it's more important to look at the students that, you know, might have behavioral problems and why they have issues. And mental health is a big piece of that. So I hope we continue down that path and we don't lose the social workers and somehow we have the safety net there for the, our students.
Yeah. Anybody else have comments tonight? Sunita and then Justice, and then Melissa?
I just want to say that May 20th is election, so do vote. And I was visiting Greenway Elementary School, and it was nice to, the best thing about that visit for me was to have the student voice, the fourth graders, they showed what they were working on school in their classroom about, and it was so nice that they were making connections about how to attract butterflies and how using the pesticides on the butter, on the flower that they come is actually killing the flower and the butterfly. It was nice to see kids feeling excited about learning, and it was one of my best school visits. So, thank you.
And Justice and then Melissa?
Okay, first I want to start with the Audit Committee. We had our, I guess, I forget how it works in cycle, but the spring meeting and the, which gave sort of the outline of the audit process that's gonna take place. I've enjoyed serving on the Audit Committee. I think it's really important and it informs my understanding of us not just saying that we spend funds or use resources in a way that's appropriate, but actually being tested by someone whose job it is to find inconsistencies, errors, misuse, whatever have you. So one, with that, the Audit Committee is a place where if something is happening, you see something you're concerned, question, that someone can forward that information and the Audit Committee audit, the actual people who do the auditing can look in to see if there's an error or a problem or a finding, something that needs to be improved because investigation is for the purpose of getting the right outcomes and make sure we're using funds appropriately. In addition, I was in a educational leadership space, which informed me about the thing I brought about AI earlier, but also I was reminded, Funnich brought up ninth grade on track. But the concept of decisions that get made here as a district and do they center the best outcomes for kids? And everybody says that they're doing that. I know that's what we all feel sometimes. The challenge with, with actual structural accountability is that you will be in flux, that things will be painful, that what, and this person, again, it's not, I'm not a privilege to like, wasn't everybody wasn't at the meeting, but they reminded how effective, how important ninth grade on track as a thing within our state led to an improvement in graduation outcomes for everyone in the state, everywhere, everywhere. Every, all, I think was brought up, 197 school districts in our state, right? So when we're having these conversations as a board, just speaking for myself, I just wanted to remind folks that my interest is around, is what we're doing, working for kids, is, is how we're engaging, what we're bringing up, what we're centering, the really challenging, complicated, morally wrenching stuff we discuss. And I just, like, that was really impactful on me this month, and I, and I wanted to share, and also that's something I'm hoping we could talk about in the next year because I feel like we haven't talked about it since I've been on the board. And that's vitally important. And the last thing, as was said earlier, the financial protection for the state comes out tomorrow, school funding. You can still talk to your representatives as a community member, as a constituent, to say how important funding schools is. That's, that's the whole message. So please don't miss your opportunity to inform our, our state representatives how important school funding is. Thank you.
Osa?
I'll try to be brief. Legislative Policy Committee for Oregon School Board Association, and then also legislative advocacy for us as a board. We've, our board legislative priorities were to get out the advocacy for current service level funding and then also for funding special education and whether that's a raise of the 11% gap, cap, or high disability costs. So hopefully, we're gonna hear some good news on that. And I think that took a collaborative effort across our entire Washington County region, coming together, finding the high leverage spaces where we could advocate across the needs of everyone, that our advocacy can help for everyone. So looking forward to seeing the outcomes of that school visit. I was with Sunita at Greenway, and it was joyful, fun, rigorous, relevant, amazing. The staff was amazing, the students were amazing. It was a really fun visit. So thank you for the Greenway staff and students for welcoming us. And then the budget, I just really appreciate Dr. Baldur's and the staff's plan for responsible use of our funds. It helps keep us in good standing with our community and for sustained financial standing. And I'm just really grateful for our community's continued support and for our amazing staff for helping us do this work so we can continue to serve our community. Thanks so much.
Safa?
I know last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just, on behalf of the entire school community, I wanted to thank our teachers for their dedication and support. I know last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just, and on behalf of the entire school community, I wanted to thank our teachers for their dedication and support. You truly make a difference.
Thank you. Tammy?
I attended a powwow celebration of our, um, native students that are graduating this year, um, at Hillsburg, uh, Forest Grove, um, May third. Um, if anyone is, um, interested, they do it every year. In fact, they've set the, the date already for next year. I am hopeful that we can coordinate our district calendar such that we don't have, um, proms on the same day. Because I know that there were a couple of students missing for that reason. Um, also want to, um, uh, make an observation that I've been hearing about, um, politics as being part of, um, a problem here at the school board. And my curiosity about that is how, how, when we bring in marginalized communities, when we talk about, um, the impact of SROs on our Black students, our LGBTQ students, our, um, students on IEPs and 504s that are much more negatively impacted by this program. Um, the curiosity I have is, you know, um, about the amount of privilege it would take in order to think that that is playing politics. And I just want to say that for me, bringing that into a conversation and decision-making that we make here on the board um, is really important. And, um, and I think that, again, uh, uh, calling something politics is a, a perspective um, that, that shows your privilege. So, thank you.
Ugana, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have much to say tonight. Um, all I can say is that, um, it was not the outcome that I hoped for, uh, regarding the, the YSO program, but I, I, I anticipated it. Not what I hoped for, but I knew, um, how it was going to play out. So the only thing I would say tonight is to beseech my fellow board members, um, and wha- whatever board would be here in the next two months. We don't know what the board is going to look like, but what I would ask is that we continue to have oversight over the, the way that the program is implemented in our school district. Um, I plead with you to please continue to ask for data, continue to review whatever data is presented to you and ensure that this program is practiced and implemented in the most equitable manner in our school district. And I look forward to what this board will look like in the next two months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you to our, um, to our board for organizing around the legislative long session. And I think that the, the work of organizing the whole county around certain issues such as special education, full funding and, um, funding, complete funding or better funding for our schools is critical and I think it's making a difference. Um, again, don't forget to vote. Um, I also wanted to say, um, it was really cool to be part of the BEF Awards. Ugana was there. Um, where we celebrated, um, three of our schools and partners in our community and then also celebration of our retirees. Um, and then also, um, thank you for educators for teacher appreciation. Um, it was, um, I got to serve, make breakfast for one of our schools. And so it was like a ton of oatmeal and hard boiled eggs and croissants and Nutella. And it's just one small piece of, um, gratitude for what they do for both, um, really it's classified and certified in our staff across our district. So with that, thank you everybody for all your work and, uh, I'll call the, oh, do you have any closing comments? Okay, I call the, um, I don't even know the date right now. The, um, May thirteenth meeting.